Yeah, I can do that too. In the restroom.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Yountville Town Council. It is Tuesday, July 20th at 6:00 PM. For those of you joining us for the very first time in council chambers this evening, you'll find the agendas and the supporting documentation in the little plastic bins on the wall by the door where you came in. Help yourself to that information. We are being broadcast live on Channel 28, and this session will be rebroadcast again on Friday at noon. And we're also streaming live over the Internet. If you visit our website, townofyountville.com, you can pick this meeting up there. One other little housekeeping item, for those of you joining us this evening in council chambers, if you would, please turn off your cellphones and pagers so that we can get through this meeting without interruption. I am calling a special meeting of the Yountville Housing Authority to order. May we have the roll, please?
Member Dutton?
Here.
Member Chilton?
Here.
Member Mueller?
Here.
Vice Chair Dunbar?
Here.
Chair Sossarman?
Here. Will you all please join us, led by our new deputy, John Zimmerman, in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. This is a writ of justice, for my nation, under your high, indivisible, with the raising of the justus straw.
Thank you, John. Public comment, these are matters not listed on the Yountville Housing Authority Special Meeting this evening. Is there anyone wishing to speak on any matter not listed on the Housing Authority Special Meeting agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Item 4, the Consent Calendar. Are there any changes or corrections to the consent calendar on this matter?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, that motion carries. There are no reports, there are no public hearings, scheduled items. Can I have a motion to adjourn to the regularly scheduled council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned to the regular Yountville Town Council meeting. There was no closed session report from the last meeting, so Item 7, Adoption of Tonight's Agenda. Are there any changes or corrections to the agenda this evening? Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that motion carries. Item 8, Public Comment on Any Matters Not Listed on Tonight's Regular Council Meeting Agenda. Anyone? Public comment? Anything? Okay. Seeing no public comment, we'll close that item and move on to Item 9, Consent Calendar. Are there any changes or corrections to tonight's consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For Consent Calendar Item 9D under minutes, the special meeting minutes, the date should reflect that the information was adopted at the June 29th rather than July 29th, so we'll correct that error.
Anything else?
Mayor, if I may just state right now before motions are made, I'll be abstaining from Items 9C and 9D since I am conflicted by the location of my residence on Item 9C, and I was absent from the meetings for the minutes of 9D.
And I will abstain from voting on Consent Calendar Items 9A and 9B. Are there any other abstentions?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, that motion carries, and for the record, the clerk will note those abstentions. Thank you. Item 10, Presentation. We are going to recognize some of our board members. The town council relies on the support and guidance of its residents to assist the town in a number of ways. We are very fortunate to have the opportunity to say thank you tonight for a job well done to several citizen volunteers who have served on several of the town's boards and commissions. Our community has truly benefited from the many hours contributed by these individuals. So tonight, we're going to acknowledge and honor the service of the following members of our Parks and Community Services Commission. And first up, Mr. Bud Delinsky. Where are you, Bud? Come on up here. What's all this? Bud is a former town council member from the 1960s, and served 32 years from 1978 to 2010, previously on the Community Hall Commission, before serving on the Parks and Community Services Commission, where he was the first chair. And as a token of our appreciation, we would like to present you with this plaque, and it has your name on it, George Bud Delinsky, 1978 to 2010, in appreciation of your contributions to the town of Yountville's Community Hall and Parks and Community Services Commission on behalf of the Yountville Town Council. Thank you for your service. Yeah. Carissa Auvier? Oh, there you are!
Hi!
Sir, from July 2009 to January 2010, and is unfortunately relocating from Yountville to Flagstaff, but that's a pretty town, too.
It is.
So on behalf of the Yountville Town Council and the town of Yountville, in appreciation of your contributions to the town of Yountville's Parks and Community Services Commission, congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Robert Motion could not be here tonight, so I'm going to move on to thanking some of the members of our Zoning and Design Review Board. Is Matt here? There he is, come on up, Matt. Matt Lamborn, serving from September 2006 to July 2010 on our Design and Review Board, in appreciation of your contributions to the town of Yountville's Zoning and Design Review Board. Congratulations, and thank you for your service on behalf of the town council. Renata Halliday has also served on our Design Review Board from May of 1997 to July of this year, and that's a total of 13 years, for those of you who can't count. And she recently served as chair for the past several years. Unfortunately, she could not be here tonight. Renata, are you here? Unfortunately, she can't be here tonight. And also, is Carla here? Carla? She can't be here tonight either, but she was serving as the town's appointed representative to the Napa City County Library Commission, and she served several terms from June 2005 to July 2010. So unfortunately, Carla couldn't be here. We had a plaque for her as well. The clerk will see to it that Carla gets her plaque, as well as Renata. And then, last but not least, we have a beautiful etched bottle to present to our interim Community Services Director. Where, oh, there he is. Come on up here, John. John DeLorenzo. Was here for the opening of our beautiful new community center, and we really appreciate all of your efforts, in appreciation of your guidance and knowledge in moving our Parks and Recreation Department forward, June 2010, the Yountville Town Council and staff.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thanks, John.
Thank you very much. I'd like to start by thanking and introducing my wife, Terri, who allowed me to come out of retirement. Put the honeydew list on hold for about a year, and I want to thank the town council and the town manager for the opportunity to work here. It was a great experience for me, a great year, it was a lot of fun, and this is truly a unique community that I enjoyed so very much. I'd also like to thank the management team of the town, they're outstanding, and they supported me every day during the year I was here. And last but certainly not least, I want to thank the great staff of the Parks and Recreation Department. They are absolutely the best, and I couldn't have had any success without them. So it was a great experience, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, John. Bob, you going to take care of the air conditioning? Thank you. Okay, well, let's have one more round of applause for all of our volunteers on all those commissions, they did a great job. And CAL FIRE Quarterly Report, Public Safety Quarterly Report?
I was going to say, Battalion Chief Parks is not able to be here, and you may have noticed that there was a certain round of sirens, so the alternates have been dispatched, and they have other more important duties tonight.
So that report is submitted, it's on file, you can check it out if you have any questions or comments on that report. Sheriff's Department, Public Safety Quarterly Report?
Ladies and gentlemen, I just wanted to say that even though they can't see me on TV, CAL FIRE knew nothing about the presentation, so they were hoping for those sirens.
They planned those sirens?
Out they went. Had nothing to cap on, and that happened, it's great. This last quarter was, it was relatively aligned with the quarters before. Crime stayed about the same. As far as community activities went, Deputy Chris Roberts had a graduation for the first dare class for his, it went really well. We had a bunch of extra units show up, we had the CHP helicopter land, and a bomb truck was here, and our SWAT armored vehicle came up, and it was a really nice show. And as most of you know, Chris was chosen to be the new school resource officer in American Canyon, so he's taking that job on. I think he's going to miss Yountville in August, September, he'll wish he was back. But we wish him well at his job down there, and like most of you saw, the lead to President, that's right, Pledge of Allegiance, Jonathan Zimmerman, who comes from three years with Stanislas County, and now about three years with us, so he's been about six years on, and he volunteered for this position in Yountville. He's used to working in a small town in Stanislas, where it's a contract city, so he understands pretty much what we're looking for in Yountville, so I think he'll do a great job here. Major crime trends for this quarter, everything pretty much remained the same, we were up a little bit, calls for service went from, you know, 426 to 45, wasn't up too much. We doubled the arrests from last quarter, but we have a lot more people in town, and those people tend to drink a little bit more than they do in the off months, so most of those arrests were alcohol-related arrests. We were up again in traffic stops, we rose from 53 to 96. We had a rate increase, we wrote a lot more tickets, and especially parking citations, I think we almost tripled parking citations. And I think you can attribute that to the fact that almost all of us are riding bikes now, and we're out there, and we're seeing a lot more on the bicycles than we would driving around in a car. So we're getting a much better feel for what the community needs, and just listening to people out on the street and being able to stop and talk to people, it's been a great tool for us. And John's uniforms are in for the bikes, so he'll start riding as well, and you'll see a lot more of us out there. And John will probably deliver on nighttime weekend riding, so it's going to work out really well for the community and for us. Traffic was pretty much exact for a few more traffic stops and a few more citations, traffic collisions were about the same as well, no injury collisions this quarter, so things are remaining pretty status quo, and I think it really has to do with the presence that we have in town, both the three deputies that work here and the deputies coming from the unincorporated area. That's about all I got for you.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Sorry, I just had one, and it actually just occurred when I had a resident call me last night, and they had received a phone call that started out, "Yountville Alert", and then it went on, and it obviously had to do with another nature, but are these things that people should be aware of? I mean, it's happened to me this afternoon, too. "Yountville Town Alert", you know, so the first thing they think is, geez, we've got some kind of a, something going on, and it turned out it's obviously a political thing. Is this something we have to live with, or?
I think we're going to, I think we're in for a lot more political alerts of different natures between now and the election, and I think we, I think Mr. Strick is kind of maybe going a little out of bounds with some of these things, but I don't know that it's illegal for what he's doing. We are keeping a close eye on what he can and can't do during elections, but it's, you know, as you guys know, it's a real gray area out there as far as, you know, free speech and what he can and can't, you know, politic for out there, so.
I didn't know, you may get a couple of calls, too, I don't know.
We have, and people are dropping off flyers that he's dropping in mailboxes and on cars and bumper stickers and buttons and all the rest, but we're working towards that end to try to do, to protect us legally and do things correctly.
Thank you.
Okay, Item 11, Consideration of Citizen Requests to Establish a Fundraising Campaign for the Town to Permanently Acquire the Silver Twist. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Very briefly, as you know, the town, under the direction of the Yountville Arts Committee, which is a committee of the Parks and Communities, Recreation and Community Services Commission, has established the Yountville Public Art Walk. The first installations have been installed, and public unveiling in June. As a result of the energy and enthusiasm, tonight, you're going to hear a request from a citizen that has requested permission from the council, if the council's so inclined, as to raise funds for the permanent acquisition of Silver Twist, the piece that's located in front of the community center. So, Marita Dornbecker will make the presentation discussion. The action items really, at the point of time for the council tonight, are primarily, one, would the town be of interest in acquiring the piece permanently, and second, would it authorize the financing? There may be some other, excuse me, authorize the finance campaign to raise the funds, and if so, I would anticipate that there will be some further actions and things that need to come back. So the actions that you'd be asked to take tonight, if you're so inclined, are, one, yes, you're interested in acquiring it, it's currently on loan for anywhere from 12 months to 18 months, the town could extend it. Secondly, would you be also authorizing staff to work with the citizen group that's potentially interested in coming forward? So with that, I would turn it over to Ms. Dornbecker to make her presentation.
Vice Chair?
Mayor, if I may ask, an interpretation from our town attorney, because I sit on the Arts Committee, should I step down from this? Is it different because it's a town entity?
I am, Madam Mayor, members of the town council, I don't see any conflict because you have no economic interest in the outcome of this decision, so you can participate.
Okay, thank you.
Now, there times the charm. Good evening, Mayor Sossarman, town council members. My name is Marita Dornbecker, and I want to, first of all, say how excited I am that the Arts Committee has brought the Sculpture Walk to town, and I understand that we have additional pieces of sculpture that are going to be placed very soon, so the beautification continues and grows, and it's a really wonderful additional aspect, I think, to our beautiful town. I attended the reception for Gordon Uther, who's the sculptor, who created all four of the sculptures that we have on loan right now. And that evening, I was approached by at least a dozen people who said that they were just crazy about the Silver Twist, and they loved where it was, and it is modern, and I think that the contrast is sort of a representation of what I see throughout the Napa Valley. We, the Silver Twist is a modern piece, and it's sitting in front of a sort of country kind of building. But up and down the valley, I note that, you know, Opus One complements Robert Mondavi Winery right across the street, and so I think that that contrast only increases the diversity and interest, architectural interest in the valley, and so that reflects what I think about the Silver Twist in our town. So, being that I liked it very much, and I was approached and asked if I would consider taking on a role in fundraising if the town chooses to acquire the Silver Twist permanently to reside where it is, and I said I would be most happy to do that. So essentially, we are in a very preliminary stage, and I'm doing some research into how we would go about collecting donations and what we would give to the donors as recognition and acknowledgement of their donation. But no other steps have been taken, I'm just really doing the research, and, you know, I'm not, it all depends on whether or not you determine that it's something that you want someone to pursue, and if you do, then I've stepped forward to say that I would be happy to establish a committee and work with that committee to raise the money to purchase the Silver Twist.
Great, thank you. Does council have any questions for Ms. Dornbecker? Councilmember Chilton?
Is this a request that's being made on behalf of the entire Yountville Arts Committee? Is it a committee request, or is this something that you were taking on more specifically?
Actually, this is something that I individually took on. I have had meetings with the Arts Committee, and there are several members that can speak to whether or not it is something that they wish me to do. I believe that they are in favor of this, but I don't want to speak for them.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Marita? Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this concept, this presentation this evening?
Hello, members, I'm Rob Winterberg. I'm on the Arts Committee that was just recently talked about. We've talked with Marita about this several times, and are, I believe, in full support of it. In fact, it's a gift that she said she's willing to do it, because I know I don't have the time, and I'd love it to be there, so just wanted to say that.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Pam Reeves, and I live at 6887 Jefferson Street. I just wanted to say that I came because my neighbor across the street, Judith Caldwell, who's also on the Arts Commission, said that you were hearing this idea today, and I had said to her at one point, just spontaneously, that I thought that that sculpture looked wonderful there, and that I really hoped that the town might purchase it at whatever time its term ran out. And I must say that in the 30 years that I've lived here, I think that this art walk has really made a huge impression on the town, and that, in a way, it's very symbolic of Yountville, because I noticed that there are lots of opinions about art, and they're very diverse, just like the whole population of Yountville has diverse opinions and styles, and I think that this piece has attracted all of that, but it also reflects it in the way that the light refracts off of the different light-catching glass, and that it just is a reflection of something that Yountville stands for, lots of diversity, but sort of held in a cocoon that is Yountville, and I think it just is, it speaks to the whole town in general, and I really do support this idea. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Judith Caldwell, 6880 Jefferson Street, Chairperson of the Yountville Arts Committee. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge the dedication and courage and huge heart of Marita Dornbecker to come forward with this amazing idea. It is so special to have her, just think of doing this for our town. Secondly, I would like to say that Arne Duncan, who's the Secretary of Education for the US Department in Washington, State Department in Washington, gave a presentation at the Arts Education Partnership National Forum on April 9th, 2010, talking about sculpture and art and community and the arts and education, and to quote him, he said, "The arts can no longer be treated as a frill in communities and in schools. Now, as we move forward with reauthorizing education, the Education Act specifically, it's the time to rethink and strengthen the arts in schools and communities. The arts are essential to stimulating the creativity and innovation that will prove critical to young Americans competing in a global political economy, and last but not least, the arts are valuable for their own sake. Each creation is special, and they empower youngsters to create and appreciate the power of aesthetic work. So the arts are essential for building innovative thinkers who will be our nation's visionary leaders for tomorrow." And those words are a direct quote. In being approached via email, telephone calls, and conversation during walks, I just want to mention a few names of specific people who I admire, who have lived here for a long time, who specifically have said things similar to, gee, I wish we could purchase that silver one in the middle of town. And they are people like Maxine Bartisono, Pete Bartisono's wife, Phyllis Brayce, Marilyn Roberts, and a woman who I so admire for two decades, who you just heard from, Pam Reeves. Most specifically, once the art was brought to town, I had anxiety of what people would say. And I tiptoed across the street and asked Pam what she thought, and she brought tears to my eyes, and I will quote her, she said, "That silver piece fits the town like a hand in a glove." More recently- More recently, I spoke to the second most favorite woman who lives in town, Barbara Delinsky, and asked what she thought of the art, and she said, "Well, the silver one I can stand." So, that's good enough for me. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, there is a phenomenal woman named Swinda Cooper, who is in charge of the special event coming up from October 15 to November 14 called Napa Valley Arts 2010: Cultivating Creativity. And she's been hired by the Arts Council Napa Valley to produce this event. And she said to me, "It's so incredible to come to Yountville because the art makes it even more special than it was last year." And I'm going to read only one last thing, which was an email that I saved. "Good morning, Judith. This weekend, I had a chance to see and spend a little time at the new community center complex in Yountville and couldn't help but fall in like with the art. I wanted to convey my congratulations for a major achievement and contribution, not only to Yountville, but the entire valley. Gordon Huthur's work is superb and very fitting for a city art walk and eye-catching. The community center complex is outstanding and will undoubtedly make a notable contribution. The complex personnel present that day told me that it had already had a perceptible good effect on participation of young people. Yountville could well be setting the standard for the rest of Napa Valley with the four pieces of sculpture. Congratulations." And that was sent by retired Dr. Lee Locke, who lives in Napa. So there's no question that I wouldn't hesitate to support every ounce of energy that Marita and all the volunteers that she will need to do this to purchase Silver Twist. And the Yountville Arts Committee will get 15% of that sale. Up until now, we have worked on a budget of zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Comment on this matter this evening before we bring it back to Council? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's John Doran Becker, and I live on Oak Circle, and I'd just like to say I like that particular sculpture. I'm not too wild about some of the others, but I think that a vibrant art scene in this community would be terrific, and I would encourage us to go forward with it, and I know I'll be involved.
You will.
Probably one of those volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jack Warren, and I live in the Veterans Home with my husband Ed, and I just wanted to say that the veterans that live here also really appreciate the arts program. They've been coming, they came some to the reception for this artist, also came to the photo exhibit, and we love the sculpture. And my grand niece came and visited, and she spent about 15 minutes looking at her reflections, going up and down those mirrors. This is a fascinating piece that children can enjoy and that the veterans will enjoy, and we appreciate being a part of the whole effort to promote the arts here in Yountville.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further public comment, I'll bring it back to the Council for further discussion and/or direction. Councilmember Mueller?
First, I'd just like to really commend the Arts Council. I think they've done a tremendous amount in a real small piece of time, and, as was mentioned, with $0, although we have appropriate, a small amount that will be coming shortly. Also, I think that they really show both creativity and entrepreneurialship with really what they've kind of done in the town. So, I would like to extend that to requesting that they take this to the public. I'd like to see the town citizens of Yountville decide. I think that this is going to be their piece. I think that by taking the question to the citizens, do you like this piece? Do you want this piece? It's also going to perhaps help with your solicitation of donations, which we all know you're going to need in these tough budget times. So, if the consensus prevails in the town, I think that would be great.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Chilton?
I recall when the Gordon Huthur reception occurred, and my six-year-old daughter was with me, and after it was over, my daughter Jessica looked at me and says, Daddy, can I go up there? And I said, she pointed towards, what my kids actually call the shark fin. I think that's probably good, because everybody's interpretation can be different. And I said, Well, Jessica, what are you going to do? She's like, I'm going to go climb on that. I said, Ah, do you know how much that costs? And she's like, No, but she wouldn't get it anyway. But I remember even with my kids, when the first piece of art, the glass across from Hill Family at the Village Estate came in. I actually do like all four of the pieces quite a lot. That was, actually, I think continues to be their favorite. They like the color and the changing color, but the shark fin, I'm going to call it the shark fin, sorry, that has that element in it as well. And to me, it does look like it was actually commissioned for that spot. And I actually even understand that some of the initial ideas on where things would go, they changed over time, and I think that was very fortuitous. So I definitely support an effort to acquire that and then essentially, I think, donate it to the town. And, you know, to Councilwoman Mueller's statement, I think that the voting by the public is very simple. You vote with your dollar bills. So, if people really believe that and have that in their heart, then the money will be there, and if they don't, then it won't, because it's not, you know, you could have chosen a little of one of the cheaper ones, but I actually fully support it. And I'm assuming, in terms of the recommendations that are in the staff report, the number three, the Town Council authorize and direct the Town Manager and appropriate staff to work with and provide nominal support, I assume that is on the level of the similar support given the Arts Committee. This will be a privately-run funding campaign and not one that Town Staff is expected to carry forward.
Yes, that's correct. And also, Town will provide the appropriate guidance and direction, since it will be, the funding is going to be earmarked for this. We need to do it with proper respect and consideration with public law, and you will note that the Town can accept, and it is a charitable donation on the part of those that want to. So, we'll be involved to provide structural support, guidance, and what I would call more of a technical expertise, but no, this is, we've had a talk, and I'm very comfortable that the citizens know that they need to be the one providing a lot of the staff, the legwork to whatever the activities, but there will be some level of staff involvement.
And one other question, I see that Gordon Huthur has agreed to sell it at a somewhat reduced price of $110,000. The Town, AKA the Arts Committee, will still receive the Artist's Commission even at that reduced rate? Is that correct?
The policy does outline that. I mean, that's the way it was written, and like many things, art, like many things in life, is negotiable when the final purchase is acquired, so.
I say keep negotiating. Good luck.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Dutton?
Excuse me, yes. I, too, would agree wholeheartedly with the comments made previously. I, for one, am not artistic, okay, but I do know when something I like, and I think that's just tremendous there. I don't, it's hard, you know, does one, obviously, one enhances the other, whether it's the community center, the piece, or vice versa. It just looks like it was developed to go there. We built the community center to go with that. In any event, I think it's just gorgeous, and I would entertain any support I could give to the project. And I do think, as Councilman Mueller said, or she, Mueller, Ann Chilton, that it appears that Gordon is quite willing to work with the Town, so I think that's very good. And, again, you can just vote with your pocketbooks, and I'm sure, once the committee gets together, they'll find out some very innovative ways to raise funds. I think they're out there. It's certainly a high hurdle, knowing that we're going to do that, we're going to have the school we have to support. So there are a lot of things going on, but if the people want it, it will be done.
Good, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thanks. I think if anybody has looked at the Town Budget this year, they'll know, there's a beautiful photograph that was taken by Michael Shower, who's here in the back of the room. It seemed like a natural image that went right on top of our new budget. It's a beautiful photograph, and it really, that, I think, kind of represents what we're talking about. It seems to really fit. My first thought when I heard this is, I sure don't want to be the person that's volunteering my time to raise this sizable amount of money, but I commend Marita for stepping forward and being willing to take this on. And to the comments earlier, this is part of exactly the discussion that the Arts Committee had about, you know, how do we decide, is this right for the public? And how does the public, you know, speak? And Councilmember Chilton nailed it. If the community comes up with the funding, that's their answer, and if they don't, then it's here for a year and it's going to move on like our original plan. So, the concerns I had that we discussed at the committee level, we'll be discussing much further down the road in terms of how do we do the recognition for the folks that do contribute? How does that fit into what is a really beautiful property? It's a LEED-certified property, so we want to be sensitive to the aesthetic that that other element will bring. But as far as the initial effort, I totally support it, and I think the community will respond, but we'll certainly find that out. So, good luck, Marita and John. I'm sure you're the first one on that volunteer list.
Well, I remember the comments after the reception, or all during the reception, and even leading up to, mostly positive. Everyone that commented to me about the art pieces were in favor of them. They enjoyed them. They really believed that they enhance the town. I'm a firm believer in incorporating the arts into our community. It's, it just makes us all better, makes Yountville a better place. I can certainly support the acquisition. I had several people come up to me at the reception and ask, who can I write a check to? So they're already out there, they're already ready and willing, and I know we've got a good, we'll hit the ground running, we'll have a good start. $110,000 is a lot of money, but I think we can do it, and I think Marita can do it. So, I'm in support of the recommendations in the report, and I hope that, I hope the community gets behind the effort and we are able to acquire the Silver Twist.
Does staff have sufficient direction, or do we need a vote?
Minute or direction would be appropriate.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None that motion carries? Thank you, good luck. Item 12 is a public hearing, Yountville Inn Expansion Affordable Housing Project Review of Historic Evaluation of Gibbs Farmhouse. Is there a staff report?
Good evening. The item before you is a follow-up presentation of the Carrion Company Historical Resources Report for the Gibbs Farmhouse, which includes a response letter to concerns and issues raised by the Council at the July 6 meeting. Before I go any further, it is important to note that after receiving the staff report, the applicant withdrew their request to demolish the farmhouse, and they've indicated that they will preserve the farmhouse in accordance with the terms of the development agreement.
Mayor, excuse me, I should have recused myself from this discussion because my residence is within five of the booths.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Dutton is stepping down with a perceived conflict. Sorry, go ahead, Sandra.
And so even given the applicant's withdrawal of their request, this item represents unfinished business that the Council directed the evaluation of the report, and the report has been presented, but it hasn't been either accepted or rejected by the Council. And so that's what we are bringing before you tonight. The historical nature of the farmhouse was evaluated during the master development plan process for the farmhouse, and it was the, and while it wasn't deemed historically significant at that time, the architecture and the history of the farmhouse certainly went into the design of the affordable housing units for that project, and many of the characteristics were incorporated into those buildings which surround the farmhouse, which was considered the focal point of that development. Thereafter, the preservation and renovation of the farmhouse was included in the development agreement, and there is language on page two that supported the approval of the project because it was consistent with the general plan and for historic resources. Because the farmhouse was considered and included in the development agreement with reference to the general plan and historical resources, staff took the opinion that the house would be preserved to the Secretary of Interior standards because there was no other reference to any other standard, and these are objective and measurable standards for renovation. The DA is not explicit that that is the standard that the applicant will be held to, and so the report that's before you tonight on accepting the conclusions that it's historic or not are informative as to the level of preservation. The response letter from Karen McNeil of Carrion Company indicates that, or confirms that William Gibbs was the owner of the property at one point, and that the property was owned by different members of his family. She explains some of the other issues that were of concern to the Council, and she is here tonight to give a presentation and to answer any questions that you might have. But the item in the staff report that identifies the options available to Council for acceptance or rejection of the report do not really apply tonight since the applicant has intended to, has indicated to abide by the terms of the DA and preserve the farmhouse. And the reason for that is there's no active project before you under SEQA that would pull in any additional review. However, the information on the historic nature of the farmhouse is additional information that was not known during that review, and for that reason, it's important in informing the standard of preservation under the development agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions, and as I said, Karen McNeil is here to present her report.
Thank you. So, basically, we're here to accept the consultant's report.
Yes. And the conclusions in that report?
Conclusions and recommendations. There is a letter here from the applicant addressed to the Planning Director. It is from the Yountville Inn, and they have indicated that they wish to withdraw their application to the, amend the development agreement. And we also received a letter from Preservation Napa Valley as well in support of preserving the farmhouse on the property. Is the consultant here? Would you like to?
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Dr. Karen McNeil. I am the Senior Historian and Architectural Historian at Carrion Company, which wrote the May 28, 2010 report, Historical Resources Evaluation, on the Gibbs Farmhouse. And tonight, I'm just presenting, it's a slideshow presentation of the letter that you received, just reiterating the points, questions that came up in the previous Town Council meeting that, where this report was discussed. Do I just click? Okay. So first, we received deeds that clearly established the ownership of William Gibbs to the farmhouse. He acquired the property in 1864, and his, let me see. He acquired the property in 1864, and his, let me see, what did I do? Oops. How did I go back?
I'm helping you.
Oh, you're new? Oh, okay, great. Okay, so he died in 1887 and bequeathed the property to his wife, and then the children received it. It remained in the Gibbs family until 1903. And there are about 100 pages of deeds that link the property to the Gibbs family. I just want to note that in this transfer at the time of William Gibbs' death, the property is referred to as Gibbs Home Place, which does suggest that buildings were on the property, likely the farmhouse was there, which supports the 1880, circa 1880 date of the farmhouse. Okay? There was a question as to evaluation language. Why did Carrion Company say the house appears to be eligible and may be eligible? And that's just a technical thing? We are not in any sort of authority to declare something historically significant or not a historic resource. Only lead agencies can do that. Lead agencies exist at the local, state, and national level. The name of it varies at the local level because local governments vary in their complexity, but at the state level, it's the State Historic Preservation Officer, and at the national level, it's the Keeper of the National Register of Historic Places. So everybody else, no matter how long you've been in the business, says it appears to be that way. There was a question as to local, state, and national significance. I took this in two ways. One is, is that there's a top-down authority. If, if the national government says that something is an historic resource, then the state government and local governments will abide by what the national government says. If a local government, in contrast, says that something is an historic resource, that does not mean that the state or the nation is going to recognize that building or property as an historic resource. So it's a top-down hierarchy. But the other, I think it may have been the more significant question, is can a building be considered an historic resource if it's only locally significant? Shouldn't it have some sort of significance to the state history, the county history, national history? And the answer is no. Most resources are significant at the local level. So these three pictures here are all buildings that are on the National Register. The one on the left, the mansion, was designed by Willis Polk, who was an eminent architect in San Francisco. The center one was designed by the Reed Brothers, also eminent architects. And the one on the right was the headquarters of Armour &amp; Company, the largest meatpacking company in the country. Their headquarters in San Francisco. All of these buildings were, are on the register at the local level only. So there are four categories of significance. For the national level, they're just A, B, C, and D. And at the California level, they're 1, 2, 3, and 4. They are virtually identical. A, or 1, refers to events or broad themes, broad trends in history that are important to local, state, or national history. B, 2, are people who are important to local, state, or national history. C, 3, is, is architecture, and that one's a little bit more complicated. It could be a building designed by a master architect, a building that is a particular, a good example of a particular type or style from a particular period, a building that embodies high aesthetic value, a building that displays an important construction technology. It could be an engineering structure. It may be vernacular. So it's a little bit broad. And then D, or 4, is a resource that is, has potential to yield information that is important to prehistory or history, and basically that means that it's going to be archaeologically significant. No, no category of significance is any more important than any other. They are all equally weighted. It just happens to be A, B, C, D, 1, 2, 3, 4. And you only have to be significant under one criteria, criterion, to be considered historic. So, next? So back to the three buildings. The mansion, it was, again, designed by Willis Polk. It is on the National Register, only under category C as an important work by a master architect. The house was owned by a member of the DeYoung family, which was big San Francisco family, not important. The commercial building, as I mentioned, it was designed by master architects, the Reed Brothers. It is not on the register under category C. It's on, it's on the register, oh, it was also constructed not long after the earthquake and fires of 1906, but it is only on the register under category B for its relationship to a woman named Elise Drexler. There was this great saga of lawsuits, and her dead husband tried to keep her from developing property, and this property landed her in a California State Supreme Court, and it's on the register only under category B. And then the warehouse is on the National Register under A for events and C for architecture. The event is Chicago's imperial conquest of San Francisco's meat industry. And C is the work of master architects, Gelfiss &amp; Sons, and a rare example of their industrial architecture. But again, none of these meet all four criteria, two of them only meet one, and that's the most common way that you're going to make it onto the register, and it doesn't matter which criteria. There is a question about the relevance of additions to the farmhouse, and these two gable additions, single-story gable additions, we concluded that they date to 1905 and 1910, and they may have gained significance over time. In dealing with the house, the additions may be retained, they may be removed. The house may be restored to any state within its period of significance, according to the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation of Historic Resources. So if we consider the building historically significant all the way up through the 1960s for the incorporation of Yountville, then you, you can, you don't have to do that much to restore the building back to its historical significance. Back to the Gibbs family, you can take those, those gables down and restore it to the flat, simple farmhouse that it originally was, the simple rectangular farmhouse. There was a question, how did Carrion Company come up with a completely opposite conclusion to URS and the Section 106 report, or FEMA report? And both companies, they bring their expertise and research into a project, and both companies, they conducted a site visit, and both companies came up with evaluations. And I really cannot, you know, speak on behalf of URS, obviously. I can only provide some comments on their report, and what I noticed in comparison to Carrion Companies is that Carrion Company provides a detailed building description, complete with a list of alterations, and URS does not. Carrion Company completed primary and secondary research, which is documented in the report, and this included census, research, maps, going to the Historical Society, conducting oral interviews, historic photos. From what I can tell, URS did not conduct research, period. At least, it's not documented. Carrion Company provided an historic context, and the historic context establishes the themes and periods of significance upon which you make your evaluations of historic significance. So Carrion Company provided a background on the history of Yountville, the Gibbs family, the incorporation, and it's escaping me now. And URS did not provide an historic context statement. So having put in that much more research and a much broader context under which to evaluate the building, Carrion Company concluded that it does indeed appear to be an historic So SEQA implications, I'm not sure exactly how much I need to address this at the moment if the request to demolish has been removed. But, so rehabilitation, according to the, if you rehabilitate the building according to the Secretary of the Interior standards, then you basically won't have a SEQA issue. You will have preserved an historic resource, period. And we emphasize rehabilitation because that is going to give you the most latitude in how you preserve this building. While rehabilitation wants you to retain as much of the historic fabric as possible, it does allow for replacement of parts of the building. It does allow for additions. It does allow for some flexibility in how you use the building and how you preserve it on the exterior and interior. If the rehabilitation efforts are deemed inadequate in terms of, if they're not automatically seen as conforming to the Secretary of the Interior standards, then there may have to be further mitigation measures, which would have to be established later on. Like maybe some sort of, you know, plaque that tells the story of the Gibbs family and a bit of Yountville, or something like that. Relocation would be another option. It's not optimal, again, in terms of preservation, you always want to keep things the same as much as possible, but it is an option. This would render, most likely render the house not eligible for the National Register, but it could still be fine for the California Register. And you would want to find a site that is compatible with the original site, where you can have the building in the same orientation and similar surroundings, et cetera. And, and this would mitigate the changes to the historic resource to less than a significant Demolition is going to trigger an environmental impact report, and it may be, I don't know, the authority would have to decide how broad of a report that needs to be. It could be targeted, just assessing the historic resource question. Demolition is a substantial adverse change to an historic resource. Demolition cannot be mitigated. Even if you did HAVES photography, which is the Historic American Building Survey, and very rigorous standards for the type of photography you use, and drawings if necessary, and the history component combined with it, even if you meticulously document the building, you can just imagine exactly what it was like, that would not mitigate. It is not, you cannot mitigate demolition. And so that would also then trigger a statement of overriding considerations, and it would, the town would have to justify how the loss of an historic resource, or how economic, social, technological, and other benefits outweigh the loss of an historic resource. So if you have any other questions, I'm happy to try to answer them now.
Does council have questions for the consultant at this point?
I do.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, and my first question may actually need to be answered by the town attorney, but it has to do with some language in your report.
Uh-huh.
And it has, it's in the rehabilitation section. The pages aren't numbered, so I can't help you. It's, well, attachment 2, the third page. And you state, if the Gibbs farmhouse is rehabilitated, it will be evaluated for compliance with the Secretary of State Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties.
Right.
And I'm going to ask this both to you and to our town attorney. In terms of the language of the development agreement, does the DA speak to the level of rehabilitation? And if it does not speak specifically to that level, what, what's the prevailing interpretation? Is it this statement here that it's automatically then a historic property, or is it some other level?
Madam Mayor, members of the town council, the development agreement, which was crafted back in 2006, does not specifically address the standards that would be applied in the rehabilitation process of this home. Therefore, what you have before you, if we did not have a designation of historic significance, we'd have no standards other than what was worked out between staff and the developer. I believe what is being proposed by the architect, by Carrion Company, is that by adopting the, by designating this, this property as a historically significant property, the standards would kick in, and that would be the standards to be used.
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks for that interpretation. So if I can just ask you, and I certainly appreciate, this is, wish you were here two weeks ago, frankly, for a lot of the clarification. But there are a couple sticking points, even with your elaboration, and one of them for me is, at what point is an individual or a family historic? And how, how closely associated with the town's incorporation must that individual be? And how many, how many, you know, pioneers of Yountville would be deemed historic? So that's the first question. And the second question goes a little bit more to, because you're basically talking about the criterias 2 and 3 as potentially pertaining. So one is the individual, the other one is the connection to the incorporation of the town.
Right.
And in your report, if I understand it correctly, you feel like both of those thresholds have been met, or as far as you can say, they're being met.
Right.
So if you could just explain a little bit about, at what point is a person historic or not? And then also, what has to really happen with this farmhouse in this location to make it significant to the history of Yountville?
Well, each report is an individual thing because there's no, no citywide survey has been completed that would allow us to compare the significance of Gibbs to every other founding resident of Yountville. So based on our research on Gibbs and our knowledge of Yountville, he appears to be a significant early figure. Yountville was very small in the 19th century, so what you have left, if it has integrity, it may have a much higher chance of being an historic resource. That's kind of true throughout California. 19th century resources are relatively rare. So that raises the likelihood, though it's certainly not definitive. And we were more tentative about the architecture because the house architecturally has some integrity issues, but if this house is one of the oldest farmhouses in Yountville, and it does seem to date to about 1880, then there's more latitude for some of the integrity issues, like the stairway at the back, like a few changed windows, the new chimney. But again, we do state in the report that for us to definitively say it appears to be eligible, more research, it would be good for more research to be done, a broader survey of historical resources in Yountville, to really say that it's eligible under C. In terms of what has to happen to the house, nothing has to happen to the house. It's already lived its life. Do you mean for it to retain its historical significance?
No, I mean to have a, I mean, just because it's old doesn't make it historic.
No, absolutely, absolutely. So you have to establish that William Gibbs was an important, in this case, that William Gibbs was an important figure in the early history of Yountville, which our report argues that he was in terms of commercial development and farming development. And it hinges on him. We didn't necessarily come up with any of his children being particularly important to creating changes in Yountville during the late 19th century. So, or, you know, if they may, if they were, if Charles Gibbs was really important in 1910, something happened in 1910 in Yountville, well, Charles Gibbs didn't own the property anymore, so you couldn't say that the property was significant because Charles Gibbs was significant, because that happened after he was associated with the house. So you have to have William Gibbs owning the property at the time that he was important to Yountville, which is what our report argues.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Councilmember Chilton?
Again, thank you for coming.
Again, thank you for coming, and I concur with the vice mayor. You've added tremendously to the last presentation. You mentioned that this property was, was known as a Gibbs home place in 1864, or it's, they purchased in 1864, and he died in 1887.
Right.
What, what within that, that deed or historical record indicates that the house did exist at the time they purchased that land?
In the deed and the historical record, I'm just inferring from the language that there's nothing that says there's a house there. None of the deeds ever mention any structures, period. In the whole hundred pages of deeds, I don't see, it's all about, you know, survey or property lines, and what the boundaries of the property are. So the dating of the house really comes more from architectural evidence, the screws and boards and, and, you know, people at Carrion Company who are familiar with 19th century nails. They determine the dating that way.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for the consultant? Margie? Thank you. Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak to the issue?
Hey, council members. Scott Greenwood, minor on behalf of the Yountville Inn. We pulled our application to try to avoid the complexities of sequoia, of delay. We want to get this project completed, and we saw this headed toward somewhere that frankly, we just didn't want, did not want to incur the delay for either the city of Yountville or ourselves. The report is before you for consideration. There's a third option. You don't have to do anything with it. You've read it, and we've all analyzed it. There's no reason that you actually have to do anything other than consider it. Be that as it may, the report does not state two, I think particularly important considerations. One of them is with both the National and the State Registry. Nothing gets listed without the consent of the owner. And right now, we're talking about imposing ex post facto standards that don't exist and are not referenced in the development agreement upon what currently exists as a project approved under the development agreement, the conditions of approval, the mitigated negative declaration for the project. I would add the second consideration on that, which is, my client, and I had discussions with them today, do not recall National Historic Register criteria or standards ever being discussed in the process, either with the council or with staff at the time of the development agreement being put into place. Perhaps there is a record that we can go back to and refer to on that. But our primary concern is that we have a development agreement that was put in stone in 2006. We did propose an amendment to that, we withdrew the amendment. Anything dealing with or seeking to inform a 2006 document in 2010 causes us some concern. But bluntly, we have a deal. We do intend to comply with that deal. That's been made pretty clear to us, we're willing to do that. That does not mean we're not willing to work with anybody, we absolutely are. But with regards to decisions that you guys have to make tonight, we'd prefer you didn't make any. I would add a couple of other items. If somebody wants to pick up the house and move it, anybody in here, please feel free, contact us. Yeah, movement really isn't an option. We don't know if it was moved once before, but moving it is probably the riskiest thing that could happen here. I would like to add one other item, and this goes to the resolution before you. We withdrew our application. We think that the resolution itself ought to be revisited with regards to recitals in particular, so that things are accurate. The particular concern is with recital three, which states, and I'll paraphrase, that, that the report concludes that the farmhouse is of historical significance. I'd prefer that that read exactly like the report actually says, which is, "It appears to be of historical significance." No applications have been made to any state entities at this point in time, and we just want to make sure that the record, with regards to the recitals, which are deemed to be true representations of fact, are clear on that. And with that, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Does counsel have any questions for the applicant? Councilmember Chilton?
If I could ask a question of staff as a follow-up to those comments by the applicant, Arnold. The attorney for the former applicant, I guess as it is, brought up concerns that I have actually highlighted here, which has to do, I guess in lawyer term, ex post facto, or the concept of retroactively applying standards to an existing agreement, which is, is actually my primary concern when I read through all of this. And the staff report refers to some ideas like that the DA does not elaborate on the standard to be applied, dot, 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 but the Secretary of Standards, Interior Standards are presumed to apply. And that clearly does not exist in the, in the DA. And I, when I read this resolution, I, I don't see this as a finding, this is an acceptance of report that says there's some maize in there, but we have not gone through a formal process, nor do I even know that this jurisdiction has one to officially designate a historic structure that therefore has these implicit preservation standards. And when the DA was signed, it was an old farmhouse, but it was specifically said not to be historic structure. So could you comment on, on that piece of tonight's discussion of whether acceptance of this report has anything to do with, in actual fact, the standards that are applied to the preservation under the existing development agreement?
Madam Mayor, members of the town council, not being the attorney who drafted the original agreement, and not being part of the discussions back in 2006, I'm a bit at a disadvantage to be able to comment on some of those discussions. But let me state that the development agreement is unfortunately woefully short in defining what the rehabilitation to the farmhouse would be. If we had specific strict standards, I think that would be helpful to all parties to be instructive on where we go from here. The, the fact that you do not have a demolition permit before you, the fact that you do not have an amendment to the development, development agreement before you, leaves you with, with a, a effort to have standards applied by the finding of historic significance to this, to the structure. Reasonable minds may differ as to whether or not that is an ex post facto application of standards. I think the, what I stated earlier was that the staff, I believe we have a set of drawings in for the rehabilitation, is that correct? And staff would be working with the developer to ensure compliance with standards that are appropriate for this structure. Whether those meet the, the standards as applied by the Department of Interior, I think the consultant is suggesting that you should. I haven't had that opportunity to have the dialogue with staff to suggest that they should be mandated to do so. So I guess to try and give a simple, straight answer to your question, I think it's a gray area. It is one that unfortunately we don't have clear direction, and I, I'm, I'm not fully convinced that if you do declare significant historic significance to the structure, that in fact you are adopting the Department of Interior standards.
Thank you for that black and white clarity.
Any more questions for staff or the applicant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
I think I'm going to try to follow up. Councilmember Chilton, and again, this comes from Mr. Greenwood, I think it was. His comments about the fact that we have a deal, and we absolutely have a deal, and I recall previous council meetings where the applicant said, basically, "We will rehabilitate, renovate this structure however we need," whatever the town says, basically, is what, I'm paraphrasing, "whatever we need to do." That was when the developer was asking for changes in the floor plan of the farmhouse, and asking for other conditions be granted on the property with the affordable housing and shifting of some of the units. So while we have had this deal in place, there has been an attempt, I think, by the town to work with the applicant to satisfy the, unfortunately vague language in the development agreement. The reason I asked my question earlier about what's the default here, because I do, I do wonder, at this point, is there even a need for the evaluation? Counsel called for an evaluation when certain actions were being proposed for the farmhouse. If those actions are no longer being proposed for the farmhouse, is there any point in accepting the, the report at all?
Well, you certainly have the discretion of doing that. You also have the discretion of not doing that. I think you're right. As this process first started, it was completely different analysis, because the application for demolition was before you, which at least didn't seem like a suitable result for this, for this farmhouse. First and foremost was because it was not allowed under the development agreement, and second of all, it was, you know, possibly from a policy perspective, not something the town council wanted to see occur. But as we sit here tonight, that has been taken off the table. And in taking it off the table, to go back to your question, do you have to make, you can certainly receive and file this without accepting the terms of the report, you can accept the report and make a determination, or you can, you can do nothing.
So if we accept this report without, then accepting the findings, how does this report, if at all, factor into the discussions the town's going to have with the property owner and the farmhouse owner in the rehabilitation of the farmhouse? Is it used, are the conditions in here the significance of value, or not until we accept it as, as fact?
It would be my view, Madam Mayor, members of the town council, that it would, it would have value, at least to provide some guidance to staff and to the developer, that the town council, the town recognizes that it does have significant, significant historic value, without making the ultimate determination as being suggested. To, it's a very difficult situation, because what may be deemed to be, meet the standards of the development agreement under the language of preservation and renovation of the existing historic farmhouse building, may mean one thing to the developer, another thing to the town council, another thing to staff. Hopefully, there's the ability to meet middle ground, and I should add another factor into, there may be a, interpretation as to what that should, should ultimately look like to the historic preservationists that, that would take a look at the structure and want to see a certain result. So the difficulty is trying to blend all of that and the different perspectives into something that everyone feels comfortable with. Again, we're dealing with a very ambiguously crafted development agreement that does lend to a variety of interpretations.
So in hypothetically, the discussions take place. Say, say we accept, but, accept the report with appreciation, but don't trigger the terms that the report is recommending. Is it fair to say the town would control the discussions if there's any sticking points in the level of rehabilitation and the, the kind of interpretation of what needs to stay and what can be altered? Is it, is it safe to say the town would, opinion would trump? What I don't want to see is if we were to move forward in that circumstance, then the developer is saying, "No, I'm not going to do that," and the town's saying, "Yes, you are," and we're getting nowhere. And unfortunately, it should have been clearly stated, and it hasn't been.
And I, I don't mean to put Bob or Sandra on the spot, but I have a question. Is it, the, the plans that have been submitted, their normal course of processing, would they then come before the town council at some point in time for approval, or would those be handled in a staff ministerial processing path?
Of course, this is taken as that the, there was the original plan for the farmhouse that showed its preservation, and then there was a proposed amendment that had numerous alterations to the farmhouse that was rejected, and then they have returned with a plan that kept the farmhouse in its more or less present condition, with a reconfiguration that removed two units out to one of the other cluster buildings. And then the uses that ended up in the farmhouse were one residential unit, an office, a laundry room, and a rec room, which were essentially the same uses that were contemplated and approved with the original plan. The shell of the building as it sits now was to be retained in that plan, though.
If I may, Madam Mayor, is staff sufficiently comfortable and satisfied with the plans as presented, that, that if, if there was no finding of the report, that the, the plans carry out the intent of what we were trying to interpret from the original development agreement?
Yes, except I would point out that it appears to me, if you carefully review each of the 10 points that are in this, the guidelines, the Secretary of Interior guidelines, what is proposed for the farmhouse would be in substantial compliance, it would seem, with, with these points. I mean, it's not as though we're going to stucco on the building or vinyl siding or something other than would remain true to its original architectural character.
So if I can try to interpret what I just heard, Bob, are we having this long drawn out discussion for some minute detail that may or may not be preserved? If, if, if the, the plans that the landowner have submitted are nearly, if not wholly, compliant with the standards that we're talking about here, what's the problem?
I'm not sure there is one. I, the, the interior of the building will be reused as, to be the layout of it for these rooms I described. The exterior, the character of it, as originally improved, was to remain essentially as it is. The type of siding, the ornamentation, such as it is that's left, roof, roof shapes, materials.
But, sorry to interrupt you, but coming back to Councilmember Chilton's question earlier of, we've already agreed that they can reconfigure the interior. And so that seems to be off the table. The question is, how does the structure, the exterior frame, the bones of this house, how are they retained? And if the bones of the house are going to be retained at the standard that this report is requesting, is the problem solved just by saying, "We're done"? A yes from anybody would be great right now.
Madam Mayor, members of the town council, allowing some time for Bob and Sandra to discuss this issue. I do want to reiterate that we're here tonight, not because of any other reason, other than the initial request of the demolition. And that, that... And that had, that has obviously altered the course of this discussion, but now we're not engaged in that discussion because of the applicant withdrawing that request. And, and so I'll bounce it back to Bob at this point to try and give some guidance.
The idea of the farmhouse originally was, it was the centerpiece of this affordable housing project, and the remainder of the design of the clustered buildings was to play off of the farmhouse in terms of roof shapes, materials, siding, knee braces. It was to pick up on those elements and be reflected in them. And that was certainly, back to the farmhouse, we want to retain those, and those were the essential, original elements of the historical building that is referred to, I believe, in the DA, that are to be preserved. So I, I think if we, what's left of the building, the shell that's really left of the building, those elements are retained and the materials that are retained, I, I think if you were to move through every one of these 10 points, you'll find that they're in substantial compliance, if the DA is complied with. That's my opinion. Also, I'll, I'll point out that the DA did refer to preservation of the historic farmhouse. There's really no other standards that you would go to, other than the Secretary of Interior standards. They're the state-of-the-art best practice for restoration and preservation of historic buildings.
One final question, for now, anyway. Preservation of the historic farmhouse, that is the exact language in the DA?
Yes, it is. The precise language from the development agreement reads that, it's on page two of 22, item 6F, and that the, one of the purposes of the, the development agreement is the preservation and renovation of the existing historic farmhouse building, its conversion to three of the workforce housing units and a recreation room and laundry for the use of workforce housing residents, and it's sitting in a location visible from both Washington Street and proposed Champagne Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Chilton, you had a question for staff? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter this evening? Seeing none, I'll close, yes, ma'am?
Hello there. I'm Pat Alexander of 6527 Heather Street, and I want to thank you all for taking the time to consider this. Now, you know a little bit of my background. I work at the Napa Valley Museum. I was pleased enough to partner with the Napa Valley Museum in writing a book about the history of Yountville. And this house is a wonderful example of our history. So as we consider adopting the resolution, which it looks like here, the recommendation is that we do adopt the resolution, that we think, not in terms of what we see today, not in terms of what we see tomorrow, but what we see in terms of 40 and 50 years from now. So as a laundry room, I can understand that. As a multipurpose room for the development, that's fine, too. But let's think about the future. Let's think about how, how our town will look in 50 years from now. So I would love for you to consider the, the possible use as a historic home, as the use has possibly been a way that people can come, out of town, visitors, residents, anyone, to get an idea of what Yountville was like, what the architecture was like. This is our history. This is where we came from. We get millions of visitors each year coming to our beautiful town, and it's because of the, the past that's been preserved. These visitors can come and see a little bit of what Yountville was like, about why we're here, about why so many people choose to come and visit Yountville. So I want to encourage Mr. Altamira, I'd like to encourage the Yountville Inn to think about more than perhaps just a laundry room, or perhaps an extension of the affordable housing unit, that this could be an incredible opportunity for people to come here, to, to see what we're about, to see what our past was about. So, Town Council, I really appreciate you taking the time to recommend and go forward with the adoption of the resolution, to, but maybe even go a little bit further. So when it comes time for the Design and Review Board to look over the plans and to, to make some recommendations, maybe we should go a little bit further. So if there's anything that, that I can do, if there's anything that the Napa Valley Museum can do that can provide a little bit more historical information or, or ideas about possible preservation ideas, a Yountville historic house, please let us know. We are willing to go forward. We will, we'll do anything that we can to, to help provide some more information. So if you have any questions, I don't know the answers, but I'll be glad to give my two cents. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Wendy Ward. I'm the Director of Preservation, Napa Valley. Boy, my speaking notes are no longer relevant. This has evolved very quickly in the past 24 hours and actually 20 minutes, so I'm actually quite pleased to, to hear that we may have be, come to a solution to, this has been simplified, I think, in a positive way, that we can refer to those 06DA standards. I think the only thing I would recommend to the city is to implicitly imply or condition the applicant to accept the interior standards, even though we are assuming that they are applying by the mere saying of preservation of the farmhouse. If they're in line, then let's go for it and let's expedite this. The last thing I want to say is, let's, I would highly recommend to, to avoid situations like this that have greatly taken a lot of time and expense to think about doing an inventory for the whole of the city going forward. This will all be avoided if that can be undertaken. It's, it's a very powerful, effective core planning tool that both developers can use, applicants can use, staff can use, residents can use. A, a complete inventory, I highly, highly recommend. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to council for further discussion and/or a decision. Councilmember Mueller?
Um, there's quite a few issues, so hopefully I can remember all of them, flipping through my notes here, but I think the one that we've really discussed a lot tonight are the standards and, in my opinion, and this has come up in numerous things, in our code and general other things that we've talked about, if we don't have any specific standards, we default to state standards. So I think that is a very reasonable alternative to, in light of not having any specific Yountville preservation standards to which we attach the words in the 06 Development Agreement, that we would default to our State Secretary of the Interior standards. So that seems very reasonable and compelling to me. In terms of the report, I think that I found their conclusions, I also would like to thank Carey &amp; Company for coming tonight and adding the, the further clarification that we requested. I think that I would like to proceed with adopting this report and preserving this piece of our history. I can't imagine walking by and saying, you know, there used to stand something and, and not being there and not even looking like it really is today. So I, I think that's a very important aspect of this job, and I think it's important that we do that. So I also agree that I would be in favor of accepting the resolution, that we accept the conclusions and recommendation of the historic evaluation of the, of the Gibbs Farmhouse.
Councilmember Chilton?
First of all, I want to thank staff, and I don't actually think you work for Carey &amp; Company, I'm not sure, maybe you used to, but thank you for coming and supplementing the report. You do? Okay. There was some question about that last time, who wrote the report. I think we have a lot of, you know, a lot more information here. I, I really simply want to go back to some basics. There was an application to demolish this, this farmhouse instead of preserving it. That has been withdrawn. And really, all of this information, all of these meetings, all of these discussions would never have occurred. And if that had not happened, and one of the messages we had for the applicant originally was, you made a deal, you said you were going to preserve it, so just stick with your deal and we have no problem. I, I, I do not support the resolution primarily because there seems to be a lot of intention to implicitly rewrite the development agreement, and I would ask every person to put themselves, from a rule of law perspective, of you have a deal, you've written a contract, maybe you had a better lawyer than the other guy had, and they want to go back and change the terms of the deal. We clearly have standards that are agreed upon, standards by how the house is going to be built or preserved. I think we should live by those standards. I believe that we should simply table this discussion and table this resolution and allow this to move forward as expeditiously as possible with the preservation and for the, the resolution for the residents nearby.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, and part relieved, I think, because we're reaching a conclusion, I'm also part frustrated that it feels like we've, we've spent a lot of time and energy, and a lot of people did, and at some people's expense, and we're back to what originally existed, for whatever reason. I mean, even looking into the report, Carey &amp; Company report says, this particular farmhouse, it does not appear to be eligible under the criteria representing the work of a master architect, possessing high artistic value, or embodying a distinctive method of construction. But what we're saying is, the way I interpret it is, even though that may be true, all parties involved still want to maintain the structure. Whether, whether we're agreeing that there is an, an official level of historic value or not to the structure, staff is going to work with the applicant to make sure, and, and as staff has said tonight, most or all of the conditions for the Department of Interior Standards are already being complied with. So I think it was still a fruitful discussion. It probably could have been done in a quarter of the time for a variety of reasons, but I think it's worthwhile, even if it took us a long time to get to this point, which is kind of right back where we started. But, you know, and I, I appreciate Ms. Ward's comments about the fact that this is, and this is coming from Preservation, Napa Valley, so this is somebody who is certainly looking to maintain historic value throughout the, the valley, that, that's being respected. And I think it is being respected. And yes, if we had specific language saying, Department of Interior Standards as of date X with conditions 1 through 10, that's fine, but I'm also reluctant, as Councilmember Chilton stated, to rewrite the agreement, given the fact that none of the other conditions are now changing. If that development agreement had been altered because of the applicant's desire to change it, that's a whole different story. But now I think we, we fall back into compliance with the existing agreement, accept this report with appreciation. I'm not willing to now require the landowner to comply with additional conditions that were not part of the original agreement. So I appreciate this report for its historic value, and, and I think staff and the applicant can use the findings as they move forward to make sure that there is a substantial and appropriate level of historic value maintained in the rehabilitation of the farmhouse.
Thank you for your comments. First of all, I'd like to apologize for the woefully inadequate air conditioning. We all tend to get a little edgy when we get overheated, and right now I'm a little bit overheated, but I concur 100% with the comments made by Vice Mayor Dunbar and Councilmember Chilton. I'm not willing to adopt the resolution. However, I do appreciate all the efforts and all the work that's gone into making the findings that Carey &amp; Company did for us. I'm comfortable with the representations by staff that the applicant will be in, in significant conformance with the 10 criteria set out in the Carey Report, and so hopefully, working closely with the applicant, staff can make sure that as much of that is complied with as possible. And I would not be, I would not be willing to entertain rewriting the development agreement at this point. So with that, I would like to, if there's no further discussion, entertain a motion to receive the report from Carey &amp; Company and...
I'll make a motion to receive the reports with no further statements.
I, I do have one point I think we do need to, to clarify. This development agreement states there's going to be three affordable units.
May I point of reference to the council?
We have made an amendment that moved two.
You've already approved an amendment prior at the request of the applicant to remove two of those units.
Right.
So this topic, there has been requests on the part of the applicant to amend the development agreement, which the town has acquiesced to in the recent. So that action's already been taken, the council already made that determination. I'm a little fuzzy now, about six or seven months ago, maybe even a year at this point. So when the applicant, there's a little bit of fuzziness when they want to say whether, you know, honor the deal, because the deal's been changed, actually, several times at the request of the applicant, to which the council has prior consented. But I do think at this point in time, the, the way you have the information in front of you is, the intent of the development agreement talked and spoke to the preservation of the resource. And at this point, the town will manage the preservation, and staff will sit down, review the application materials, and, and determine if that preservation plan is adequate to meet the town's interpretation of the development agreement.
So I have a motion to receive the report with no further statements.
Before I second that motion, which I'm going to do after I ask staff one question, and that is, could you clarify, both for council and the public, what the schedule is for the rehabilitation and how it relates to the granting of the expansion of the Yountville Inn? They, they are tied together in terms of when the Yountville Inn, the new units and office space can, can open?
I'm going to do my best, and I'll ask Bob to clarify if I, without having it in front of me, my recollection is that the commitment requirement is that the affordable housing has to open within six months of the inn rooms opening, and perhaps Bob or Sandra can clarify if my recall is either correct or out of line.
But also in terms of the rehabilitation of the farmhouse, not just the affordable housing?
What I would say right now is, that whole schedule needs to be brought, because this thing's been moving around. The construction of the affordable units has been ongoing, and substantial progress on those units has already been made. Obviously, the farmhouse is lagging in, in terms of any renovation because of the delay while we've been going through this process. So a new schedule would need to be submitted to the town.
I would just ask staff if, and if the attorneys maybe found language, but I, I would like to know if we have a specific schedule, so this farmhouse can't continue to sit in a deteriorating state with no action.
Madam Mayor, members of the town council, the, I believe this is the appropriate portion of the development agreement, which reads, "The owner shall complete the construction and obtain a certificate of occupancy no later than 180 days after the grant of a certificate of occupancy for the expansion of the inn. If the housing units do not receive a certificate of occupancy within 180 days after the grant of a certificate of occupancy for the expansion of the inn, owner shall pay a penalty of $1,000 for each day thereafter that a certificate of completion has not been issued. If a certificate of completion for the housing unit is not issued within 270 days after the grant of a certificate of occupancy for the expansion of the inn, owner shall be prohibited from renting any of the new inn rooms until a certificate of..." from renting any of the new inn rooms until a certificate of occupancy for the housing units is issued."
So there are deadlines to the rehabilitation of the farmhouse in the agreement? Okay. I'll second Councilmember Chilton's motion.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Dunbar?
Yes.
Mayor Sossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Mueller?
No.
Make your motion, Carey.
Thank you. Item 13.
Do you guys need to take a quick break, or should we move on?
A lot of people are going to leave right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we keep going.
We should open some windows or something, get some crosswind.
We need some ventilation in here. We can't continue without it.
I don't know if they actually open their doors.
Not that I'm aware of.
Only the chefs in the room think it's on.
Is Councilmember Dutton, are you out there? They've probably gone home and gone to sleep. Oh, that feels good.
Be careful, Steve.
Don't break those historic windows.
That should do it.
Yes.
That should do it.
Ooh, that feels better already.
Yeah. The front door, the front door should be propped open, so we can get a little cross-
Negative, the back too.
Yeah. I'll go do it.
Should just move this outside.
Okay.
It's like first grade.
Okay, we're good. Thank you. Don't break anything. Don't hurt yourself.
Shut, please shut up. Blind. Holy, I've got a headache. Yeah, I didn't bring them with me. Sorry.
Item 13 is a public hearing, design review, Bottega Restaurant. Before we call for the staff report, I would like to disclose the fact that since my primary residence is within 500 feet of the subject property, I will have to step down and recuse myself, ask Vice Mayor to chair this portion of the meeting.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd also like to announce I will step down. It's been my custom, any food service operation within 500 feet of my business, I will not participate in those discussions. I'm going outside.
And you'll call the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So, item 13, a public hearing, design review, Bottega Restaurant, 6525 Washington Street. If we may have a staff report, please.
First, I'd just like to note how nice the fresh air coincides with this discussion on Bottega's cooler enclosure. So a cool topic of discussion. The item before you is design review to construct an enclosure that would house a walk-in refrigerator and storage at Bottega Kitchen's back service door. And I have photos of the area here as we move in over the next three. It's this area behind this fence here and below the walkway. This walk-in refrigeration unit is needed to meet the requirements of Napa County Environmental Health, and it is in response to their existing entitled use and the number of seats, and there's no expansion that is required. The enclosure is an approximately 400 square foot storage area that would house an eight-foot by 15 and a half foot walk-in unit. It would be a three-sided enclosure that would sit in this area that's shown against the brick wall, and which would extend beneath that elevated walkway to the elevator. As you can see from the photos, it would eliminate one of the two existing accessways. It provides access to Bottega and Napa style, and the rear event center from this north parking lot. And it would leave that, just that one accessway, which is an ADA walkway past the elevator. The applicant does have plans for an additional signed and lighted entryway about 20 or 30 feet north of this area that is proposed in the near future, although it's not a part of tonight's proposal. The design of the enclosure would match the small utility room that you see to the north or right-hand side of the elevator shaft, and that would be in terms of the siding and the fascia, the core ten metal roof, the faux window and the eve width, so it's designed to integrate into the structure. The zoning and design review board looked at this application on July 13th, and they gave the opinion that the, an exception to the site's floor area ratio is justified because the enclosure addresses the needs of an existing use. There's no change to the use or increase in the number of seats requested. They did note that the design of the enclosure creates a undesirable bottleneck at what is the primary entrance to the facility, and it's highly visible from the right-of-way. And they were concerned with elimination of one of the two walkways, and is the reason they are encouraging a condition of approval linking this approval for the walk-in cooler to the applicant's plans to submit and construct an alternate entryway to the Bottega area. The ZDRB also noted that the garbage and recycling cans are visible toward the, near the back fence and the back door, and encouraged, as you can see in this photo, encouraged that they be located within the new enclosure area, except when left out for pickup. And so while the location of this proposed storage room is at the Bottega Kitchen back service door, and it represents the back of house, as the ZDRB noted, it is in a very prominent and visible location on the property. And for this reason, staff could not support the original proposal of the applicant for a simple fenced enclosure, which is the photosimulated portion in this photo. And so the applicant is proposing a structure that integrates with the building and matches the other structure on the property. You can see it here in these 3D renderings. So it's analyzed in terms of the zoning and design ordinance standards, and it complies with all of the standards except for the 25% floor area ratio, which the V Marketplace property is already at. But there's a design ordinance section that permits an increase to the maximum FAR for existing commercial uses when it's necessary to achieve compliance with environmental health, and that is the case here. The standards that must be met are that the additional floor area must maintain the existing approved level of commercial use, and that it does not contribute to an intensification of the use, and that the additional floor area is not accessible to customers or guests. And both of those conditions are satisfied here, as this walk-in is necessary to meet the requirements of Napa County Environmental Health for the existing use. One item I want to mention are signs that were included in the staff report to the ZDRB but were removed from this staff report because the applicant indicated they were not ready to move forward. But they were shown on the drawings that were submitted on the date that we went to publication. And it is an approximately 2.9 square foot sign. It's three and a half feet wide by 10 inches deep, that would be suspended from the elevated walkway by about a foot, so it would maintain a 10-foot clearance from the sidewalk. And it would represent a relocation of the existing Bottega awning sign that would be obscured by this new room. And if we could go to the, the photo sim shows how the sign is obscured, and it no longer reads as a call to the entry to the area. This is a sign that would be obscured. So staff is recommending, if the council is so inclined to approve this, that this sign be allowed on a temporary basis for the six months that it can be used before a more permanent and formal entryway to Bottega is constructed, so that guests coming from that north parking lot know and understand how to access the rear of this property. We would also like to suggest a condition of approval that was omitted from this staff report that would tie the project to the approval of the town engineer for the storm drain issues and to CAL FIRE for fire protection and access issues. And the applicant is here to present the project.
Does council have any questions for staff? That's all we've got. Thank you. So let's open this public hearing up. Let's start first with the applicant. Does the applicant wish to speak to the presentation, or just speak to each other in the back of the room?
Good evening, everybody. Michael Kierel from Bottega. First off, thank, I want to thank council and staff for working through with this. It's not often that, you often get put between a rock and a hard place trying to figure something out with environmental health and the city at the same time. And timing is critical for us to be able to maintain the level of refrigeration required of us right now. And I think that the proposal is sound, and actually, over the next six months, we'll solve a larger problem for getting into the V Marketplace and create a sense of arrival that I think best suits the town of Yountville and the quality of town that you all are running. If there's any questions, I'll be here. Any questions for me, while I'm up?
Councilmember Mueller? Councilmember Dutton? I know.
Excellent.
So, Mr. Kierel, if you could stay. I always have questions.
Yes, sir.
Specifically to the walkway issue, because I noticed the ZDRB had their, it appeared their greatest concern with the, what walkway would remain until the other more formal entrance that you're talking about. There may be a condition of approval of this item to have a better access point than what would be a very narrow walkway now. If I understand this correctly, all that would remain is the little walkway that goes right past the elevator?
Yes, sir.
So could you speak to what the condition would be, once the cooler is in place, what kind of access are we talking about?
I don't think I understand the question.
There'll only be that narrow strip of walkway left between the cooler and the elevator, correct?
Correct. Two people wide, as opposed to the four-person wide that exists today.
And are you proposing in this application, it looks like there's no landscaping represented in here, so are you, are you proposing taking out that planter strip that's right now between the two walkways?
The planter strip maintains. The building face goes where this, where this fence is shown here, and then the roof above it. So the planter stays as is, and I think we propose some planners up in front of the building as well to tie it back into the rest of the landscape. To help you understand this, it wasn't that I don't want to put in a walkway right now. The city's very encouraged about putting a more permanent structure to tie back into the other one, and it's just that other $25,000 that we're trying to get a little bit of variance on until we can get through the rest of the summer. It's a much more expansive and expansive project with the roof and the roof line and everything else that goes with it. But yes, the landscaping would tie back in, and the flowerbed that's there would tie back into some other planter boxes in front of the new building facade.
And if, Bob, if you could find the shot, this kind of an aerial from the walkway, what, there's that space that had a couple chairs in it now, what's, I mean, the actual photograph, do you have that, that shot right there? So that's basically between the proposed cooler and the outdoor dining area?
Yes, sir.
That's, that area there is to remain unchanged and just be open space?
Yes, sir. It actually doesn't work as an entrance at all right now, because people end up coming in that little teeny service door and not walking around to the, to the right. So the proposed new entrance, which we've kind of been through with, with staff a couple of times, is a beautiful four or five-person wide sweeping walkway that comes in on the other side of the elevator shaft, and actually gives you a nice sense of arrival and a view to where Bottega is and the rest of the back part of the V Marketplace. You know, we all recognize that this isn't a perfect solution, it's just simply a very good one for now.
So the proposal is that narrow walkway for the period of time it takes to get the cooler built, and then the other entrance built, and then what happens to this, the remainder of this narrow walkway? Is that, is that eliminated, except for the access to the elevator?
Not 100% decided. We do need entrance into the elevator shaft, so it, we've had discussions over moving it and stopping it right there, but nothing's been decided either with staff or V Marketplace.
Okay.
But that's what we've been bantering around.
Thank you. And if staff can clarify a little bit of that discussion, I'd welcome that.
Based on representations from the property owner, they do recognize and are working on a longer, longer-term, more elegant entryway solution. So this is an interim situation. It will allow proper egress access to the site. And in some ways, if you look at how that site currently works, it's kind of confusing. You had parallel sidewalks with a landscape strip in between them. So we're not convinced, it still maintains access to the site, it still maintains access and ADA access to the elevator. But we've been and are convinced that the applicant will move forward in a timely manner with the improved entryway, and then we will have, I think, a much more significant improved approach to the whole side there, the north side of the project.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public like to speak on this issue? No? Nobody? Okay. I'll close the public hearing portion of this, and public comment portion, and ask for council comments and potential action. Councilmember Mueller?
It all appears quite reasonable to me, and I am, have no issues.
Councilmember Dutton?
Yes, I think it appears that staff and the applicant have worked closely together, and I must say, these are the type of applications I like to see, instead of, gee, we got to take something out because we're not doing anything. So obviously, that means the business is good, and I'm grateful for that. So I think it's good. I'm glad to see there will be a newer, or an additional, a new market, a new entrance as described in there, and in the meantime, I think this piece suffice, because I can certainly understand what you're putting up with. The Health Department?
Well, my comments, I've been satisfied by staff's, the staff report about the reason we're doing this, to comply with environmental health, and the fact that this does comply with our design ordinance requirements. Now, you stated before we move forward that there'd potentially be a link to that new entryway as a condition of this use. So do you have language that's ready to be added to the conditions?
I've included a condition in the proposed conditions, but I would propose two others. One related to the signs, that the sign is approved per the plan and for a temporary basis, to be removed in conjunction with completion of the pathway. And then the other two, that the project shall be the approval of the town engineer for the storm drainage issues and CAL FIRE for fire protection and access. The condition that you were referencing is, included is number seven.
So those conditions are already part of this?
The first one is that you noted, and the two I just suggested, I'm recommending be included.
Okay. So if there's a motion to be had?
I'll move the approval of resolution number 2901-10, approving design review for Bottega Restaurant Cooler Enclosure located at 6525 Washington Street, with the addition of the sign request on a permanent basis, and also with that the town engineer approve any storm drain or fire access.
Cal.
Is there a second to that motion?
I thought we were going to put the sign up temporarily, and then move it with a new, so would that be an amended motion, or you just want to add that now?
I was just saying, well, I think that there is no mention of a permanent sign, correct?
It will be part of the request for a new entryway. That one that we'll hear in six months and have constructed.
So they remove the permanent sign, okay.
Remove the temporary sign.
Remove temporary sign.
The temporary sign.
And it's CAL FIRE that would be approving the fire-related.
Is staff clear on what Councilmember Dutton's motion is?
Probably not.
I am, so I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? That motion, that resolution passes. Thank you very much. I would like to welcome back Mayor Sossman and Councilmember Chilton. They have to come in now. They have to come in now.
Either in my council plane or in the top drawer on the left side.
Yeah, it's nice and cool. Yeah, it's, I think, five degrees plus.
It's better here.
You guys don't need a break?
No.
Okay. Item 14, concept review. J. Gregory Sellers, Rossi Concepts, 6548 Washington Street. Before I call for the staff report, I have to disclose that since my primary residence is within 500 feet of this project, I will have to recuse myself, step down and leave. The council chambers and Vice Mayor Dunbar will chair this portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other council members have any other conflicts with this item? I'll take that as a no. So, moving forward with item 14, a concept review. J. Gregory Sellers, Rossi Concepts, 6548 Washington Street. Staff report, please.
The item before you is a conceptual plan for the rezone and general plan amendment of the subject property and the potential redevelopment of the site into a mixed commercial and residential building with onsite parking. And in May of this year, the applicant presented two conceptual plans for the rezone and general plan amendment. And at that time, the council's concerns could be grouped into two areas. One was that the number of replacement housing units. One was in reference to the number of replacement housing units that are required for a rezone from commercial, residential to commercial and for the loss of affordable, of housing stock. The other related to the application of the town's design standards to a parcel of this small size such as this, and it included setbacks and FAR and open space and those other typical elements. Staff is asking that you look at the concept plan before you in two parts tonight, and the reason for that is the council could decide when this is formally brought back before you to approve the rezone and general plan amendment, but to reject or deny the plan to redevelop the site, but that the rezone and general plan amendment would create the fabric for an eventual redevelopment of the site. So, the first issue before you is to evaluate the merits of the rezoning of this property by considering the parcel location, the surrounding property uses, and the town's policies on replacement housing. This property is an approximately 7,000-square-foot lot that's located on Washington Street and within what is considered the town's core business district. And the general plan identifies that zone as the area from Humboldt Street to the north to California Street to the south. And that district is intended to be Yountville's main street, the focus of its commercial and civic core. And as it's developed, the subject parcel and the parcel to the north, the Gates Estate parcel, are the only two residentially zoned parcels along that commercial strip. And the Gates Estate property is what's known as a retained use, so it's a commercial use that's in a residential zoning district. And that would leave the subject parcel as the only residentially used lot within that zone. And we're talking the core business district, which is, as I say, Humboldt to California, rather than the north end of Washington Street that does feature many residential properties that front onto Washington. As the property is currently zoned, it could be developed with a single-family residence and a second dwelling or other multifamily unit, but not likely at the density that is currently existing on the property. Which brings me to the issue of the replacement of lost housing. I will start with Housing Element Program 28. It requires the preservation or replacement of existing affordable housing when those units are lost to new construction. And those units must be reconstructed onsite, relocated to another site, or replaced with affordable units on or off-site. And the way staff looks at this program is that it applies to affordable housing units. And the town's inclusionary housing ordinance defines what an affordable unit is. And so, the five units that we're looking at as part of the subject parcel would be considered market rate units because they don't meet the definition that they are managed under a regulatory agreement, that they require qualification of tenants' income, or are they subject to the lottery selection process. They may be affordably rented due to condition, but they don't fall within this strict definition. So, from staff's perspective, this program 28, housing program 28, does not apply to this parcel. The other housing element policy is program 21, and that seeks to replace existing dwelling units and affordable housing opportunities that are lost to a reclassification of property from residential to commercial. And there's a formula that applies to this replacement housing, and it seeks to obtain units that are equivalent to the minimum number of affordable units that would have been required of residential development of the site. And the second prong is that the housing units, plus housing units for one-half of the number of expected full-time equivalent jobs generated by the commercial use. And in this case, there would be no minimum number of residential housing units required by development of this site or redevelopment of this site because of the size and nature of the development. The inclusionary housing ordinance applies to the subdivision of land into five or more lots or the development of five or more residential units. And a good example of this would be the Vineyard Oaks project on Yountville Cross Road that was 13 lots and many residential units. So, they had to meet the minimum affordable standard. The second prong, however, would require housing for one-half the number of full-time equivalent employees. And since the use is still conceptual at this time, the number of employees can't be determined with certainty. However, the two proposed residential units are likely to meet the standard, and at least there's a chance, if there are four or fewer employees that are generated by this use. So, this is something we have to understand the use a little bit more. I think it's important to note that even if the five residential units on the site were lost to redevelopment of the parcel under the existing zoning and a single-family residential and second dwelling were to be constructed, there would be no replacement housing that would be triggered. And in fact, that housing would be reviewed under a design review application before the ZDRB rather than come before the town council. I also think it's important to look at another housing element policy that applies to the affordable housing overlay. And that applies to larger parcels. It applied to the Bardessono, applied to the French Laundry Inn and the Yountville Inn. And what it seeks to achieve is to allow a, to allow 20 residential units, a density of 20 units per acre where one-quarter of the units are affordable. And when you look at the density that applies to other areas in town, the mixed residential unit allows a density of nine units per acre. The night subdivision and Vineyard Oaks project I mentioned allowed a density of eight units per acre. The density that exists on this parcel of five units for the 7,000-square-foot lot equates to a density of 30 units per acre. So, it doesn't comply with the town's current zoning and design ordinance standards, and yet we're looking at the existing housing and requiring replacement housing. We're creating a difficult situation, especially if the council determines that a rezone for this property makes sense, because in that case, only 15% of the floor area could be used for residential. And that's an area of a little over 1,000 square feet, which would allow two approximately 535-square-foot units, which is equivalent to what this applicant is asking for, or three 355-square-foot units, or four 268-square-foot units. And you can see that we're seeing some extremely small units on this small lot. And when you consider the other zoning and design ordinance standards for buildings and structures that are compatible with the surroundings, we're finding some difficulty in making those numbers work. So, staff does believe that the two proposed residential units that are proposed for this rezone and general plan amendment are the most feasible, that they make sense, and that they really are substantially in compliance with the town's housing element policies for town. So, that's the first part of the discussion as it relates to the general plan amendment and rezone. The second item before you is the conceptual plan for the redevelopment of the site.
And actually, Senator, if I may interrupt you. If I could just ask, if council right now, when we're kind of halfway through your presentation, do you have any specific questions that pertain to the rezoning aspect of this?
Yes.
Councilmember Mueller? And if I, just before you start, I just want to remind the public that this is not a formal application. We're just discussing the potential rezoning and the potential granting of this retail use. It's, nothing definitive is being decided tonight. With that, Councilmember Mueller?
One of the questions I have, because I think it's pretty important when we consider Housing Element Program Number 28, is the information that you supplied regarding the term affordable housing unit and its official designation. When I consider what I recall, that's why I'm asking the question, regarding the affordable housing units at the Yountville Inn, seems to me, and I'm standing to be corrected, that they do not fit this because there is not going to be a lottery and they are not going to be managed by a housing authority. Is that correct?
Well, if I, if I may just answer, these are not affordable units that we're talking about?
No, I'm talking about the definition as stated in Housing Element 28.
So, no, that would be incorrect. This property owner is managing the project himself for the Yountville Inn and the placement of his employees, but they're still subject to income qualification. They're subject to the lottery process. They are also overseen by Napa County Community Housing, and I'd have to defer to Bob, is that the name of the organization, to ensure that units, even when they're managed by an owner-operator, let's say, are in line with those requirements that are spelled out in the affordable, the inclusionary housing ordinance.
Okay, so, Yountville Inn affordable housing fits this entire definition. They're going to be managed by the housing authority under regulatory agreement?
Let me...
Yes, the DA is the regulatory agreement.
They've already been allocated across the income target categories. There's eight low, very low, eight low, nine moderate, because the applicant has developed that housing on their own without any assistance. They retain 13 of the units for their own employees, which they're allowed to do. But those employees still must qualify.
And I'd like to also point out that these are deed-restricted units. They're managed by the Yountville Inn, and they're under the town's regulatory control. The town contracts with the City of Napa Housing Authority, since we do not have housing authority staff.
Right.
So, they will be the ones that are doing the regulatory compliance and the review. That is slightly different than the property over at Fennell, which is actually managed by Napa Valley Community Housing. They're also deed-restricted. So, that's the key, is that these, these properties will be formally and deed-restricted, limited to affordable housing. Whereas what staff is explaining, the current property on Washington just happens to be cheap or affordable.
Right.
But it is not designated or protected. The property owner has a whole lot, you know, the property owner...
Yeah, that wasn't my question. I just wanted to make sure that, I just had an understanding that the affordable housing at Yountville Inn didn't, wasn't the same here, but now that's been corrected. So, now I understand that all of our affordable housing, that I understand, does fall within this definition. Okay. That's my question. Thanks.
Councilmember Chilton? Councilmember Dutton? Do you have any questions of staff about the rezoning portion?
Just an explanation, Bob, hypothetically. Going here and looking at page four, probably about second paragraph, in this case, the four residential units, legal nonconforming built prior to. If an applicant, hypothetically, he wanted to come up and just duplicate what's on there now, only newer, would he do that? Would he be entitled to have the no setbacks, the whole thing? I mean, the same rules?
With the use permit. He would have to come to the council and request a use permit approval for, under our nonconforming ordinance, you can do that with council acceptance.
Because that was on there prior to the...
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll point out, there's nonconformities in terms of use, and there's nonconformities in terms of zoning standards, and this has both. And the five units that are there are there with no use permit and the standards they were built to in terms of setback, FAR, parking, those are the zoning standards that are nonconformist with as well. So, all of that would have to be accepted to continue and be improved under a use permit.
Okay. And then, I guess, I don't think you really mentioned it, Senator, but any ramifications, you alluded to the fact that the property north, where the Gates Realty, maybe at the same time, just rezoned it all if you're going to do that. Implications there, I mean, although it is commercial now, but it is not zoned that way, correct?
I think it's bringing the zoning in line with the use and the structures and how Washington Street functions.
Is that something we've done before?
We've steadily eliminated retained uses up and down Washington. The North Washington Task Force, back in the late '90s, created the North, or the Old Town Commercial Zone District and eliminated an entire cluster of Downey Gordons and Hotel Luca and that whole area. There were stars on every one of those lots practically. And now, we're down to a handful, including when we recently eliminated another one with the Night Lumber was a retained use, and now that's with the approval of their subdivision gone. So, we're down to Lavender Inn and Bordeaux House and the Gates Realty.
And French Laundry.
And French Laundry.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Senator. If you can continue on with your staff report for the...
Well, can I follow up to Bill's question? I think that was...
At this point, questions of staff, yeah.
Right. But it's following on what Bill's asking. So, those properties that you just identified, what are those? Are those historic, commercial?
Retained uses?
So, no, just the zoning there?
It's the Old Town Historic District.
Okay, so, it's all the ones back there.
But they're identified by an asterisk, and they're commercial uses that have operated within that zone. You wouldn't want to make any, want to change the zone to commercial because it would stand alone as an island within that district, and that's why the Gates Estate isn't anything other than Old Town Historic. But if the adjoining properties become the same zone, it does make sense to continue the zoning district.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Senator. Could you continue your report, please?
Okay. So, now, we're moving on to the conceptual plan that the applicant has submitted for, that's in support of its request for rezone and general plan amendment. And it presents a mixed commercial and residential project that consists of a joint furniture, showroom, and wine tasting room of approximately 1,400 square feet on the ground floor and two residential units totaling approximately 1,000 square feet on the second floor. And you can see there's a courtyard at the front side of the building that opens directly onto the sidewalk, and it presents a 32-foot-wide building that would be set back 15 feet from the front, five feet from the north side property line, and 17 feet from the south side property line, and with a 47 rear yard setback that accommodates the rear parking lot. It includes one- and two-story portions of the building, the portion with the residential unit. And in here, I've included some of the two earlier proposals in case you wanted to compare those. This is, those are both earlier ones. We go all the way back up to the top. It's the one before us tonight. And the conceptual design includes stucco walls with natural stone elements and a corrugated metal roof. But these are still very conceptual at this stage, and these would need to be further detailed as part of the master development plan for the project if it moves forward. The applicant is proposing to share access to the site with Edward James Courtyard to the south in order to reduce the number of curb cuts and to eliminate a second 20-foot-wide driveway right adjacent to the other. And what would happen here is the existing driveway would be closed, a new driveway would be constructed immediately adjacent to the north of that driveway, and the stalls would be... would be reconfigured. There are eight parking stalls for Edward James Courtyard that sit along the north property line. Six of those would be moved south, so they're adjacent to that Edward James Buildings and, and landscape strips. The other two would be moved north to, so they're adjacent to the proposed structure, and the remain, and an access point would be created to the rear parking lot at, for the proposed structure. And what's achieved by sharing this access and circulation is the applicant's able to propose three more stalls that are necessary for the basic uses based on square footage. So while these are still conceptual, they were evaluated in terms of the zoning and design ordinance standards, and the proposed FAR for the commercial uses of 20% and the residential FAR of 15% conforms with the standards. The front setback of 15 feet is the only one required by the code, and the others are left to the master development plan process. What the applicant has done here is they've eliminated the zero lot line on the north side and created a five-foot setback. They've also drawn in the Gates Estate Building to the north, so you can see the limits of that structure and how it would interact with the proposed structure. The proposed building heights conform to the zoning ordinance, and the 25% open space that is provided does so as well. However, staff notes that on a project such as this, the open space takes on a feeling of perimeter planting beds and less usable space than aesthetically usable space. However, there is the front courtyard. And the revised plan also includes the 200-square-foot decks for the residential units so that they have separate and distinct outdoor space. The proposed parking meets the code requirements. As I mentioned, there are seven stalls proposed for the existing, proposed commercial use at the rate of one stall for each 250 square feet of floor area, and there's a stall each proposed for each of the two residential units. Even with the relocation of parking stalls, they are offering three more stalls than the minimum necessary. They're also proposing to share this driveway, which is supported by staff and encouraged by the zoning ordinance for the minimization of pavement and the, and limiting the number of driveways and access points to Washington where those can be controlled. So the application process before you tonight is a general concept. This applicant wants to understand more whether they've addressed the issues you raised before to determine if it's worth their effort to move forward. And the way you would see this come before you would be with a general plan amendment and rezon. Of course, when you see that, that will include this conceptual plan because that's required by our, our ordinances. But then you would see the master development plan, which would include a use permit and design review for the structures and uses, and that could come before you as a preliminary and final plan, or if the applicant feels it has enough direction, it could combine those into a single review. It would go both to ZDRB for comment and then you for a decision. So that's the proposal before you tonight.
So just to clarify, you'd like a comment on the conceptual design as well as the uses that are being proposed?
Yes.
Okay. Comments or questions of council for staff? Counselmember Chilton?
Sandra, my question is with parking, and maybe this is simply a comment, maybe you can answer it if it's been determined yet, but I think this is a vastly improved parking plan. My only concern and question, and I think if this goes forward, is there needs to be a very clear delineation between what parking is allocated to Edward James Courtyard and what is to the Joseph Property. Because what I, you can sort of, you know, there's increase in parking spaces, in my opinion, so that's always positive. But at some point in the future, if there's a change of tenant or use at Edward James Courtyard, and to make sure that we can properly count the parking spaces so they're not getting double counted. Has that been discussed already, or is that something that we will firm up down the road?
We haven't developed it to that level. It's something that we can definitely address with the use of signage or other agreements between property owners to ensure there's adequate parking for the different buildings and uses. But we see this as very positive.
Sandra, could you comment on, just for clarification, under this concept, are we also getting on-street parking along Washington, which currently does not exactly exist?
That's a good point. There is, there are potentially two stalls of public parking that could be added to the street that don't currently exist.
Questions, Counselmember Mueller, of staff? Counselmember Dunn?
Yes, I would, and I agree with Counselmember Chilton. I, I think this is vastly improved. I, I just had two comments, and I would ask this of Bob or Sandra, either one. It sort of takes me back when we did the Hotel Luca and the, that, where we put the driveway in the back and the, it was, you know, going to be used. It looks like here where we not only have, you know, sort of a easement through another property, but also obviously a use of. It looks like the parking spaces, those four, sort of straddle the, the property line, if you will. I'm just curious, Bob, I mean, I know at the time I asked the question, you said, "Well, that just goes in perpetuity. That's it." You know what I mean? But not being, well, I guess I'm a devil's advocate, assuming down the road, things change. And in your experience, have you ever seen problems, especially have this, where, you know, the one tenant obviously sort of controls the entrance and can sort of make it difficult if he's not getting along with the other tenant on the park? I mean, it just, are we going to continue to see these type of things as the density becomes more critical around?
They would be required to record a revocable easement for the use of that.
Which offers a lot more long-term security for these stalls versus the parking agreements for, that Edward James had with the marketplace that could be terminated at any time.
Well, does any of this, I mean, if you're saying that those four spaces there are obviously, let's say Edward James, I mean, if somebody's going to lose here on the deal, I mean, they're, they're giving up eight, I see six, you could say it's two and two. But I mean, when you, when you go in there and say, "Well, that's really for Edward James, those four," then all of a sudden, does that affect the FAR? Because theoretically, those are, you know, they're losing out of space, so to speak, if you will, although it's not legally that way. I mean, how many of these things is that? Oh, correct me where I'm wrong.
Be aware, this is a master development plan, and FAR can be a flexible number depending on the merits of the, the plan. You can adjust that to where that is not a concern in the interest of yielding more parking overall.
And I guess, well, I guess, in your history, you know, where you've been before, has this, have you dealt with these situations many times, or, where you have, you know, an easement through somebody's property like these?
Well, you cited Hotel Luca. It has an easement through the Washington Square-
Right.
-property. And the zoning ordinance does require, or not require, but encourage, is shared driveways, and that's the situation we have at Somersden, that is sharing a driveway with the vacant property to its north. And when it is developed, it will, they'll both be sharing that as an easement, mutual easement between the two properties. So what we're really doing, it's a realization of what's encouraged in, in the design ordinance, and the advantages to each property, instead of having a 24-foot drive aisle into each property, which consumes land and also creates more access and turning maneuvers onto Washington, narrows it down to one, and it conserves land for both properties.
Yeah, and then, I don't know, I guess what concerns me a little, if there's, I don't know, I guess you can never see the problems, but I know, and I, I bring up Hotel Luca because there is some problems. You know, I sit at Upper Wast, and you know the problems on Monday morning. They can't get in there now, you know, to the trash container if they're blowing up balloons and that type of thing. And that's something that sort of blew right by us when we were, we were doing that. You know, I knew that that was a, a critical thing, but as long as you're comfortable, they're not going to have any issues with that. I, I mean, I think it's great the way it's laid out and for what you have to work with. Yeah.
That's it for your questions for now?
Sort of.
Okay. Just let me know. So either Sandra or Bob, I guess, Sandra, in terms of access, the proposed access, the business use, I think it gets a little bit to what Counselmember Dunn was just starting to refer to. I'm still trying to figure out with this new iteration, where the primary access is meant to be. Is it, this is supposed to make Washington Street the primary access to this property, even though it's only accessing four of the spaces from Washington Street, and it's got nine spaces that are basically access from the backside of the neighboring property? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
However, the way this has been, before it was configured as, and we can go to that illustration, it was a long driveway and the access point to the proposed property was tucked back in the rear, so you couldn't tell-
There was only one access, and it was that rear.
Well, there were two proposed. One is this on their own property directly to their rear parking lot, which cut up a lot of space. The other alternative was through Edward James with a connection made right at the rear parking lot. And one of the issues there was that it was tucked in the rear, nobody knew that that was access for this lot. The improvement staff sees to what is proposed is that the driveway is opened up, there are stalls on both sides, and you're, you're drawn into the lot in a way that it looks like it's shared parking for both properties. The way I envision the four stalls that are adjacent to the, the proposed project are that those could be shared by either of the two properties. Two of those are required to serve the Edward James use, but two of those are overflow stalls and aren't required by the proposed use. So, so giving some flexibility there in a very visible location that this serves both the uses makes a very usable lot. And with signs that along Edward James and those stalls, that those are for Edward James, and once you enter the connection to the subject lot, that those are for the proposed project, it creates a very usable space because it's visible from the street rather than it having that hidden connection that the earlier plan proposed.
And we know how well people follow signage when they're trying to park close to their location. So do we have confirmation from the Edward James property owners, property owner, that this plan is even okay with them?
They're in discussions with them. It hasn't been finalized, but they've given their consent to move forward.
Right, and I do want to move forward that this is a concept review. So obviously, in a concept consideration, if this does not materialize and they cannot produce this when they come pull the application, your, your comments are considered in that in that manner. But since it's not a formal application, we don't require that level of understanding. But to address your concern is when this becomes a formal application, that can, you know, that understanding and commitment on the part of the Edward James property owner will be required.
Also, just one other question for now, and then I'd like to hear from the applicant and public. The Attachment III rendering shows in the front a fire pit and seating area, and then when you go to Attachment IV, no such fire pit and seating area is represented. This was the case in the previous iterations, if I recall. So I'd like more explanation, and if you can't give it, I would ask that the applicant speak to it, because I think this is important. It's the frontage on Washington Street, what is being proposed there.
What you see before you is a revision to the site plan, but they, they reused their elevation drawings because they were substantially close enough, because it's still so conceptual.
But I, I'll just, I'm sorry?
Sorry, that means there's a fire pit, right? It's proposed.
I would refer to the specifics on the site plan rather than the elevation, since those were reused. And if this is developed further in the future, they would have to reconcile any differences that they have.
Yes, they would. Okay. Are there any questions of staff? So I'd like to hear from the public on this concept. First, if we could start with the applicant, would you like to speak to any elements of your proposal?
Good evening, Vice Mayor. My name is Bruce Peters. I represent the applicant. Good evening, council members. We've gone a long way since we first came in here with the initial concept. We started out with a square block, and we were trying to squeeze a, a round tube in it, and it, it took a lot of, a lot of evaluation, a lot of concern. I think this last proposal, I think, enhances this property as good as this will get. Being able to recede the power station or the, the electrical box down was a big breakthrough in the concept of bringing the parking and bringing the access to. I think the biggest reward is, there's very few projects in this town that actually says, "Here, city, we just gave you three more parking than we had last year or last moment." That allows three people, no matter what they're doing, to park somewhere here in town. Widening the, the overall building is what we feel is what Washington Street is about. It's designed for walking. People like to walk in this town. There wouldn't be a break. You would have one primary entryway, which is that 24-foot ingress and egress, and that would allow the building itself there to take a nice expanse of that property, inviting the public. You had talked about the fire pit. The design was initially to have it up there and still will be. It is open to the public, very similar to the Joseph Cellar Building, which where they have a fireplace out front and basically open to the public. It has always been our intention that we have, that we could be a destination place. In getting the, the overall setback, we, we paid very much attention to what was brought up, Cindy Gates's building. We looked at shadowing aspects of that, in setting the building where it's at, and where her windows are. I think we pretty much have resolved that as to where the location of this footprint is. So we're trying to bring in harmony, and harmony can only start with the very beginning of you rezoning this. Without that, this whole thing is a moot point. We feel that this is probably the last parcel, when you start from California Street on the right-hand side, outside of the vacant lot that remains, but it is one of the last parcels that really is not commercial yet. And that would just be the harmony that I'm talking about, bringing it all the way in, and if you rezone the adjoining parcel, that would, I think, be an accepted basis for making Washington Street what it is. It's our consumer corridor. It's our walking corridor. We feel that we're bringing architecturally here something that's far better than what exists now. And we've kept within the parameters of the requirements. We're less than the FAR, what is given to us. We've given more parking. We've given, initially, we came in with one housing unit. Now we have developed two. If you get it much smaller than that, you really ask yourself, "Why you have housing units?" The intent is just to bring in a, a single person, or would you like to have a family? And these are more conducive to families. At least they're, they're larger than 200-foot, 250-foot studio apartment. So we hope we have confided to, to bring in the Housing Element Unit here, to bring in architecturally a well-designed building that is, that takes up a lot of frontage, bring it as close as we can, open to the public, and bringing in retail. Basis, of course, is for our wine cellar and to create a, a merge with an existing retail operation. So with that said, I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant? Counselmember Dunn?
No, I don't.
Thank you very much. I do want, before I ask folks that are here tonight, I just want to recognize that an email was sent to staff and council from Lois Riker, who said she is in support of the Jake Gregory Sellers item, as it is on the agenda for this evening. So with that, would anyone that is here tonight like to comment on the concept? Please, come on forward from the back and state your name.
Yes, council, Mayor Dunbar, Vice Mayor Dunbar, and staff. My name's Michael Scher.
Can you read that mic down for me, please?
Here we go. It's not up in my eyeballs here. My name's Michael Scher. My wife has Raz Galleries, which is at 6540 Washington Street. As at the last meeting that this was brought up is changing the zoning, as I said then, I was very much for it and still am today. I think it's very important that this property is updated on that. As to the conceptual design that they're presenting here at this time, I really don't agree with it in the sense of the parking issue. I realize that what staff says, that it's a great idea for, you know, less street curbs and cuts and so forth, but that's great in looks and design what they're presenting here, but the reality of it, they don't know what that is. Because the reason, currently the way the courtyard, Old Beard Plaza was set up, that parking lot is a cut-through. It's almost like a street coming through there during the day with both residential people and other people, cutting through, using it as a shortcut from Washington to Yount and Yount to Washington. So we have that issue. The other thing is to saying that we gain parking spaces is a fallacy. Because if you look at it, they are, currently the way the parking lot is set up, there are two handicap parking spaces that you can see on where it says it eliminates eight, okay? Down there, those are two handicapped presently with the space for a van. They have moved those across the way, but they haven't made space for the van handicap. Plus, they've added a third handicap upon the space on the property line closest to the building. So in reality, we don't gain any more parking spaces. The other thing is that we currently, the property currently shares the parking with Bouchon and the bakery. And we have the bakery parking throughout the day and we have Bouchon's parking throughout the day because when Bouchon was originally allowed to have its seating, it was this convoluted thing of, we'll give you X amount of parking spaces so that they could have their 67 seats. So those were thrown into the Beard parking lot at the time, is that. So, and then the other thing is that since there's only one access to, quote, "the parking for Edward James and the property next door," then people are going to think that that whole parking lot is for next door. And they won't know that they're, you need signage to say, guide it to their parking lot. So it's, it will add that much more of a problem, plus with the UPS trucks that come in there each day, and the FedEx trucks, and the armored truck, yeah, they only come through there one day, but there's other times of deliveries. The other question I have is for this property and the business that they're going to be running, is that they're going to be running a furniture business. And at the last meeting, they asked the person that handled that, is that where is it welded, gets delivered in? That means big trucks, okay, deliver what kind of furniture. Where is that truck going to park and unload? It can't get into that parking lot, basically laid out in the configuration it is now to get in and get out, and not cause a consternation for clients coming into Beard Plaza. Plus, I think Councilmember Dutton is aware of what happens with the trucks delivering in the morning for Bouchon and the bakery back there. They're out there in the street. So if these trucks are parking in the street, they're going to block traffic during the day. And if you notice the parking space, the curb that's out in front of the plaza there would actually be in front of the wine tasting shop, Hope and Grace and Raz Galleries. Right now, that's a very narrow section that goes from about this wide to about four feet wide. We have people just on a normal basis trying to park there during the day to go to Bouchon Bakery, or Bouchon. And so therefore, they're parking in the street illegally. So somewhere down the road, we need a sign there that says, no parking for that area, just for another thing. And as to creating parking down in front of the building, I think that would be great if they could come up with another one or two parking spaces, at least for that, if there's enough room to allow the street to pass by there. But I think based, as for the conceptual of the building itself, I think it's fine. I really would prefer, if I looked at it, to take the building and move it closest to the courtyard property, and figure out some way to use their existing driveway to get down to the back. I know it's another cut, but it's already there. And so is in Lee Beard Plaza's or Edward James the way it is. And the parking spaces that they would need, they could get parallel parking down the side of the building, closest to the Gates property, and it won't be a two-story building looking down on Gates at the same time. So I think the parking is, would be the biggest issue, and how this is designed is great, but in the long run, I think it'll just cause that much more problems for Beard Plaza, and anybody will need to come into that property there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any others present would like to comment on this? Yes, please.
Hi, Cindy Gates, Gates Estates. I think one of my main concerns is the closeness of the building to my building, and the sight, the line of sight of all this foliage or landscaping, if you will, that covers up my sign. So as you're coming down the street, we already have the stash trees on the left-hand side of this sidewalk as you look at it. And then we've got all this other stuff that they'll be adding, and I see that you won't be able to see my build, and the sign on my building again. So I see that as an issue. I mean, maybe-
Sorry, could you just make sure you stay close to the mic so folks watching can hear you as well?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's, the landscaping is also a concern of mine, as I'm looking at all the trees and the patio and the structure above the patio or whatnot, or around it. As you're driving down the street, what I'm seeing is sign, the line of sight is obstructed by all of this, so that you don't even see the sign of my business on the side of my building. I agree with this gentleman a little bit, where he wants to see the building further away from my building. Of course, that's my first choice as well. The last time I was here, and after the meeting, I went out and said, gee, wouldn't it be a better idea to just flip your plan this way, have your access in this way, you'd have just as much parking, or it could be created. You've got more landscaping and whatnot in the corner, it looks like, and some over here where that could be additional parking, and replace these four places here, if it was just scooted over this way. And then they would already have the curb cut there, and the parking would, could stay as it is in the back like they have it as it is. They just wouldn't go in Edward James Plaza there along the side. So I don't know how feasible that is, but it looks like it would be easy to me to just slide it this way more. So that would free up them being five feet from my property line. And I recognize that they've got the building back just a little bit, but at the same time, if you look where my building is, they're right there. So that's my immediate concern.
So just in case people can't see how you're gesturing, I'm not sure, but you're basically proposing that they move the building from the north property line down to the southern property line, so that it's-
Exactly.
-reversed from the way they have it now?
Right, that's what I suggested last time, because there's already a driveway there. We already have the distance between our two buildings as it is. In essence, if they took the footprint of what's there now in the front and built that up bigger or whatnot, it's not going to impede on my business at all, or my building. But bringing it forward as it is, and bringing all the foliage forward and the hedge forward, and then all the way up against their property line, five feet, that kind of does. I mean, it absolutely does. If you picture a car, I'm sorry, I'm pointing this way, but if you picture a car coming down the street and you're looking up towards my building, you've got all this foliage straight up, plus the stash trees on this side, so my signage disappears. There's nothing that I can do about it. So if the foliage is kept lower, we already have our stash trees that are there now, which is fine, but then someone can see through those or to the right of them and see my sign, because I only have that sign and the one in the front. So I think that's really necessary for my business. And of course, I always have parking issues. I only have those two parking places that aren't even designated for me, in the front of my building, which I don't have half the time. It's general public that parks there. So that's an issue as well. Anyway.
Do you have an opinion about the rezoning aspect of this?
I have to think about it a little bit more. Right offhand, I don't, I don't think. I think I'd rather inquire a little bit more about it, look into it, and then get legal advice first before I remark on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Mr. Peters would like to speak again.
Yes, I'd like to address a few things that were brought up tonight. The delivery of furniture is strictly going to be a sales. Outside of the initial delivery or the possible rotation on a quarterly or seasonal manner, there will not be a big delivery truck there. They have a specific warehouse in South Napa. You'd come in, place an order, it gets delivered, or you can pick up from that occupancy. Outside of general merchandise, that would be with any retailer within this town, that's what we're going to have. But as far as big, large vans or trucks delivering furniture, that would not be on a daily basis. It would be probably some, you know, within the year on a less of a time. I have a concern about people that are tenants and not property owners, giving direction to the council on how structures or developments are to take place, where they could very well not be occupying that building in a year or two or whatever. I think we have to address the fact that we could pretty much, we're building within the setbacks required. We're taking a very good course in looking at trying to bring something better to the city. If we were to flip that building, we would be back to our original plan. You'd have something fairly narrow, very little frontage, with only a driveway to accommodate something that is already accommodated by this new plans. I feel very strongly in the fact that most of people that shop in the Beard Plaza, or even go to a lot of that area, do of course park across the street in somebody else's property. So this town is never, until one day that we build our own two-story parking facility, we're always going to be confronted with this situation. And until that day happens, we probably can't even talk about it. But I think we can address the delivery issues, we can address the fact that we are bringing the best that we can for this particular property, and it, with this new configuration, with the cooperation between Thomas Keller and the Rossi Group, I think is best serving, getting maximum use and bringing something to the town that is well-stated.
Thank you. I appreciate you addressing the flipping of the footprint, because I was going to ask you that. Any other members of the public? Let's have a gentleman that hasn't had a chance yet.
Councilmembers, my name is Bill Rossi, the property owner.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Rossi, could you?
And first of all, I want to thank you for looking at this. The key word here is no, no action required. So I appreciate your comments. I've been working with staff for about a year on this, and this is kind of the direction that we ended up with, you know, with the usage, the idea of rezoning it, you know, the whole idea. I appreciate the comments from the public, so this gives us an idea, the concerns that we need to follow. So I'll be brief, and, you know, before we move forward on this, we just want to make sure that we have a chance of a nice project that's going to benefit the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that has not had a chance to speak would like to speak? And if not, then we'll go for round two. Yes, Mr. Scher?
Just one brief comment as to gentleman's thing about tenants. My wife's business been there for 20 years. She has 12 more years on her lease in that property, and she has no intentions of leaving. And I, as to people parking across the street and the other parking lot, I'm sorry. Our clients come in, like to park there, they do park there, and we know that. So his comment there, I just, sorry, he's misinformed.
All right, thank you. Anybody else like to speak to the concepts, either the zoning issue, or the proposed uses, or the, Mr. Henfling, I think I, I see your hand.
Yes, you do. It's nice and warm in here. It's cold out there. Just kidding. I know you have problems with your air conditioning. Don Henfling, 6545 Yount Street. A couple of issues. There's a lot of parking, that's nice. It's not going to affect me too much unless they do business between 11:00 PM and 4:00 AM, which is when no cars park in front of my house. There is one issue about garbage. That garbage container is up at the intersection of two homes, and that needs to be addressed. You need to take a good look at that. The garbage container that is in Edward James Courtyard, it's the one over on the right with the two doors that swing open, is right adjacent to my property, and I've had some issues with it in terms of smells and rodents. So that needs to be addressed. Also, in the staff report, there was some mention of local serving businesses, and, you know, that's a tough one. If you go back to the general plan, if you look at the general plan that was approved in 1992, you will see that every single parcel in Yountville had homes on it. They all got changed. It started off with Altamira taking 10 homes and putting in the Yountville Inn, Artisano taking 60 homes and putting in the Artisano Inn, taking, I think it was 22 or 23 homes where the four-acre parcel from the French Laundry is. And when you changed all of that and went from houses to inns, then the tourists became the ones who had the money to spend, and local serving businesses really took a hit. So I think to try to say we need to put in local serving businesses in this place, as the staff report implies, is fairly moot at this point. So personally, I have no problem with the zoning change, and I don't have any trouble with the concept of a wine tasting room. I know that you're concerned about that, you're trying to get some viability, but those are really venues that focus on tourists and not residents. So that's no concern to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? First comments or additional comments? Thank you very much for your feedback. So now, council comments, please. Some guidance for the applicant, both the zoning and the proposed uses. Councilmember Mueller, please.
I'll start with the proposed use. I, even though that there is certainly lots of discussion about whether wine tasting rooms are local serving businesses or not, that is our, what that, the zoning says it is. And I still think that if the real intent of redeveloping this whole property is to put a wine tasting room in, and then they bought an elephant they really can't, you know, feed or house, so, you know, maybe they should put the wine tasting room someplace else. That being said, I do think that it does make sense to change this zoning. I would like to look at the addition, the pluses and minuses of the Gates property as well. So, you know, we can really decide, should we be just doing this, and then we're going to do another one. So I'd really like to add that to the mix, since this still is a concept. I too have a concern about the parking. I spent a long time looking at this, and I still can't quite figure out where I would really drive and kind of go to. I do think it's still confusing, and the open space being planters is also a bit of a concern for me. So- So, you know, I think overall, it does make sense to consider this zoning, a wine tasting room, just no matter how I slice it, does not fit into that definition, where we have plenty of other areas, although maybe the Washington at the north end of town is under a bit of reconstruction right now. There's going to be, that is the appropriate zoning configuration for a wine tasting room, and that's where Jessup Sellers was. So, I don't think we would be preventing them from doing a business. They might just have to wait a little bit, but as I said, this has certainly taken a year. So, I think it needs a little more work. I think it will ultimately raise the property value quite a bit here if we rezone it from its current state to more of a business, but I don't think we've really got it right yet. And another thing that, you know, we certainly can consider, if we're really trying to cram too much into a little spot here, is that the housing can be relocated to another site. So, I'm certainly, you know, going to suggest that the applicant can take a look at that. So, bottom line, the zoning change is probably the most acceptable piece out of the whole package that I see right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Chilton?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll go in order, zoning. I expressed some reservations at the last meeting, and this being the, at least the fourth year I've been on the council, we've never rezoned any property during that time. And it's interesting, there's reasons that people do and don't zone in the first place. I've heard several people give the story of the vice mayor back in the day, living in one of those parcels, and it was kind of carved out for that reason. I've heard that from multiple sources. Nonetheless, it was done that way. But I've heard from a lot of, a surprising number of people. I asked people the last time to tell me what they thought, and I have received zero comments in the negative. I have received quite a few comments in the positive that honestly surprised me in some ways, just sort of knowing the history of town and sometimes the people who said that they thought it made sense. I would say from a, simply a resident perspective, if I wasn't seen on the council, I would look at this as an island along Washington Street. It doesn't make sense for this to be residential, and therefore, I do support the change to the RSC zoning. The property to the north, I don't, do you, do you guys own that building? You're a tenant, I think, aren't you?
We're a long lease and optioned by.
Okay. So, you know, I do think that it makes sense to convert that as well to the RSC zoning. I think the property owner should agree to that, or say that they want to do that. Redevelopment of that parcel, I would never do the math on it, but I think it would be extraordinarily difficult, because there's a large square foot building on there, and to go to modern standards with parking, as you're aware of, open space, et cetera, you'd be at a little postage stamp building there. So, my guess is that retained use will look like it does for many, many years. The second issue, which at this point may be the more complex one, has to do with the use. I saw three major changes from the last one, and I have to say, Mr. Peters made a comment of it, this has changed substantively, and I believe it has changed very substantively. And I think that most of the changes are very positive. First of all, I do think that if I look at the setbacks on the north side, adjacent to the Gates Estates property, with the five-foot setback being in there, which is our current standard, I think it's positive. I think that should allay some of the property, the tenant slash property owner's concerns. And there is a 15-foot setback to the building from, not the street, but from the sidewalk. So, I think those existing trees, and some of the, we can get into the details of some of those plantings when those times come, but I would say, as an owner of a business who has no sign fronting Washington Street, that I think that some of the fears are probably not as founded, reputation will precede anybody happy to drive and buying a house on the spot. And I think that that 15-foot setback plus the sidewalk is positive. I personally believe that the parking plan is vastly improved. The double entrance, I thought, was very negative. I think that this improves the streetscape. I do think it should be widened. I think this just makes that part of the town much more approachable and walkable. There is, there was a statement that there's not a net increase in parking. There is a net increase in parking. I mean, that's, there are more parking spaces than are, A, required and B, that are existing today. So, again, like somebody said, it's not often you increase parking. I think it's fairly logical, you're going to pull in. Those of us who are not used to parking configuration will see it odd, because it's been that way for so many years. But I think most visitors come in, and they're going to understand where to park in general. I think it's very important in this town that we have, as, from a business perspective, that we have the perspective that we don't have individual customers. We have a customer that we all are sharing as businesses, and we need to view it in that perspective. I don't think anybody comes into town to just buy a sandwich, just get a glass of wine, just by art. I think we're, we have to look at that as a, you know, as its own organism that we all feed off of each other. The last issue, the last major issue, has to do with the housing. I believe, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe, after all the discussion about replacement housing, that the only real factor that comes into play has to do with the residential to commercial conversion and triggering of the FTEs, of the half of a unit per FTE. I believe we usually round down. So, if there are two rental units on the top floors, and that would tell me that they could have up to five FTEs, or we'll just say four, with this new configuration, I would say if you look over a year, and the applicant, the Jessups, can correct me if I'm wrong, you're not going to ever have more than five people. You're not going to make it if you do. I can tell you that right now. And especially in the off-season. So, I think that that replacement housing is sufficient. My only concern is that when it comes time to condition the approval, is that those units need to be conditioned for residential use only. And I know that there are rental units that are very close to Washington Street that are used by businesses for accounting offices or other types of uses because of limited space. I think we need to be very careful about how that's written. But as long as those are leased out and somebody's living there, I think that those are positive. And, you know, I saw on Facebook the other day that there's a single bedroom for rent with a nice view for $650 a month. So, I think that even at that small size, that it's probably positive it's on the open market and not restricted. Open space, the open space is fine. I've said it over and over and over. I think the open space restrictions are unreasonable and not feasible, and they've met them, and they've been creative, and it's fine with me. The last has to do with the use. I'm going to agree with Mr. Henfling. In general, I can't verify the numbers you said on housing, but the reality is, is that I own a truly local-serving business, and there's not a, there's practically no businesses in this town that would survive without the tourists. And I think that we all really need to come to grips with that fact and be grateful that many of the businesses, including mine, survive because of that. I think that it's impossible to look down the future and say 20 years from now, what all these wine tasting rooms will be. I, you know, I don't know how many years ago that there was, as everybody says, there was a dozen antique shops in town. Nobody would have said, oh, there'll be zero, there'll be one. I think the increase in retail space is simply positive, because the more retail space there is, hopefully, that will give some pressure, relief pressure on rents, and that will help allow more local-serving business to survive, because rents are pretty tough. And that's just a fact. Supply-demand, the Napa Valley is in demand, just the way it is. So, unless we want to make a shopping strip somewhere, which I haven't heard a proposal for, I think that's the way it's going to be. So, I'm fine with the use, and I think this is a dramatically improved plan, and I would be disappointed to see major changes to the basics of it, because I think that some of those are, some of the other things are actually negatives.
Thank you. Councilmember Dutton?
Yes, my comments, Vice Mayor, and I'll agree with Councilmember Chilton on many of them, so I'm not going to reiterate it. I do believe that it does call the rezoning for that as acceptable, and with the ideas or the restriction he mentioned on the space north, it would probably be appropriate to do that at the same time. Without repeating everything, just a few comments that I added on. The increased parking along Washington Street there, two, three spots, whatever, that's a very good positive. As far as the way the structure is, it's certainly much improved. I don't know, you know, by flipping it, you're going to cause problems on the other side, so I would be willing to leave it the way it is. I do want to reiterate, though, and I think Councilman Chilton brought a good point about the units upstairs, that they are used for housing. I know we had an incident at north, and I don't know if it's housing anymore, it was offices. It was intended for housing, and it became offices quite clearly, so I would hope that didn't happen here. That's just shame on us if we allow that to happen. I think Mr. Henfling brought up a good spot with, or good comment with the garbage disposal, or garbage cans. I would definitely look for a relocation there. Whether you flip them with the space on the opposite end of the south, fine. But if you have two home units right in that area, not only the noise it's going to be associated with, but also the potential smell and everything, I don't think that's appropriate. We went through it with Red. We moved it, you know, further, closer to the restaurant for that very same purpose. So, I think that would be appropriate. And as far as the use, yeah, I think local serving sums it up pretty well. I mean, things have changed. I mentioned it before, not enamored with another wine tasting room, but until this council wants to put any caps or restrictions on it, it's pretty hard for me to say absolutely no, you can't do it. So, I don't have a problem with that at this particular point in time.
Thank you very much. I will just try to highlight a couple of things that I don't know were thoroughly covered. I would just first start the recycle enclosure. I'm not in favor of that location either, for the reasons that Councilmember Dutton just commented on. This is an improvement. I'm probably stopping a little short of saying a vast improvement. Let me just jump back about the rezoning issue to get this in sequence. I'm comfortable, this is one of the very few parcels that I think it would be appropriate to rezone, because I do think it has always stood out as an odd spot as residential. I think that's been one of the challenges, to have it a viable residential parcel. So, I would likely support that idea. I struggle with the access. That's been my problem from the very beginning. I like as much Washington Street curb area as possible, so I do like a shared parking drive aisle. I don't like the idea of shared parking across lot lines. I think we're asking for trouble. I realize we're not putting part of the structure over lot lines, that makes a big difference, but I would be, I'm somewhat concerned about that. I'm still also very concerned that Yount Street is going to become the kind of default business access to this parcel. As was stated, many of us, I'm sure, not just me, have gone through that parking lot to get through as a shortcut. And if traffic is on Washington Street, it's very easy for trucks or other retail, or other business traffic to just go on Yount and then start to impact the residents on Yount Street. So, I'm not saying it's a complete deal-breaker. I'm saying, as I've heard a little bit from other folks here, I think there still could be some tweaking of the access to this parcel that might improve it. I think, just from the comments we had a couple of weeks ago, we've improved the access. So, I think maybe a continued review of that would be potentially beneficial. One thing about the concern about the impact on the northern parcel, I appreciate the fact that you heard our concerns about the zero lot line on the north end and got some breathing room there for the existing Gates Realty building. I would just remind everyone also that the way the structure is built here, proposed anyway, with the first floor only toward the front of Washington, that's going to naturally reduce the impact on the Gates parcel, because it doesn't have a two-story element there being set back. And I think the landscaping plan, the signage, all that stuff can be addressed by staff as this thing moves forward. So, we aren't going to answer the issue of local-serving business with this one concept, just like we haven't been able to with other concepts before. So, that's an ongoing, moving target that we'll continue to try to refine. So, hopefully, you found all of our comments helpful, and you'll be moving forward with plans and changes. Does staff have anything else they need from us in terms of feedback? Sorry, we've had the public comment portion of this, so this is, we're not acting on anything tonight, so you're welcome to talk to staff and give some comments if you'd like to comment on this. Nothing is happening tonight. We're not approving the zoning, we're not approving the retail or anything. So, if you didn't get a chance, when we had the comment period, feel free to talk to staff after the meeting is over. So, if council doesn't have any other comments for staff, I will close this review and welcome the mayor back to the desk. There she is.
Do you need to take a break?
No, I think Councilmember Chilton is taking his break.
Okay. Well, you want to take five minutes and freshen up?
No.
Okay. Well, I mean, everybody is gone, so.
Okay.
Okay. Wow, glasses. Can't see a thing. Think you can make it? Staff ready to proceed? Council ready? Okay. Item 15, county-wide permit system for caregivers. Introduction and first reading of an ordinance. Do we have a staff report?
This is a county-wide proposed ordinance for, and we would be adopting by reference a county-adopted ordinance that would establish a set of requirements for permitting elder, caregivers to elder and dependent persons. This was a result of an effort by Napa County Commission on Aging, and the vulnerability of the elderly population is laid out in the staff report, and the need for added protections to that population through permitting their caregivers. The idea would be to, through the ordinance, the permit system would be set up to where it's defined as a caregiver coordinator, which would, that function would be served by the area agency on aging, serving Napa and Solano. And permits would be tendered to that agency, who would then buy caregivers who are engaged in for-profit care. care of the elderly and dependent adults. And that application would have a number of questions on it regarding their history, primarily criminal history. That agency would then go to a industry specialist that would perform the background check, and along with that, there is a list that is attached to your packet that indicates a list of disqualifying crimes that would automatically reject the permit. And that's attachment four. So through this system, the added protection of, to the elderly and dependent adults, of persons that have been background checked, at least for criminal history, would be afforded, and that's the essence of the adoption of this by-reference county ordinance. So attached to is, your, your staff report is the ordinance that we would be proposing, you adopt 389-10, as well as the county ordinance, which is chapter 5.60. There's a fee schedule in here, resolution establishing fees for obtaining a caregiver permit, the list of, the county resolution adopting a list of disqualifying crimes, and lastly, a memorandum of understanding between the area agency on aging, serving Napa and Solano, and the county of Napa, and the town of Yountville for their services. Any questions I could answer?
Does council have any questions for staff?
Yes.
Councilmember Chilton?
In the staff report, it refers in the 1234th paragraph, it talks about the concerns about family members, and it says, "The adopted ordinance defines caregiver as any person that provides personal and/or domestic services for compensation, or any form of compensation for an elder and/or dependent adult." And then you say, "The qualifier of receiving, quote, 'compensation or any form of consideration' may largely address the concern by not requiring permitted of non-compensated family members." When the district attorney was here shopping this, the question that I asked was, if an individual hires somebody, I shouldn't say hires somebody, but allows them to live in a room in their house, is that consideration of any form if this person's a perfect stranger? And the answer was yes. And I do not understand how, I don't see any change to this regulation from what was originally proposed, where it says, "Any person that provides personal or domestic services, compensation, or any form of consideration for an elder or dependent adult." I, I don't see that this has changed in any way from what the district attorney himself said would apply to family members. I mean, has it changed?
I think the change has been that the permitting applied to, to anyone providing caregiving, including family members, whether they were compensated or not, and I believe the change has been the idea of receiving compensation for that, providing that service. And the idea being that a family member who is caring for a relative of, say, just out of a family responsibility motive, and with no compensation, would not be under this ordinance, would not be required to be permitted.
My concern there is that, I'm not sure who's saying that. I'm not sure if it's the district attorney, or the Napa County supervisors, but it doesn't say that in the ordinance. I mean, it doesn't make that distinction. It continues to use the same terms they used before, any person, any form of consideration, et cetera. I mean, there hasn't been an exclusion placed in there, and one of the letters that we received was that this did not apply to family members, but I think that was based on the staff report and not based on the ordinance itself. And I know you didn't write this ordinance, so you don't have to defend it too much. I, I don't see it. Maybe Arnold, you can address that, too. But, I mean, I'm going after the fact that the top law enforcement official in Napa County stood here and said, "Any consideration of any form includes," like I said, I saw a house, a room for rent for $650, a single room, that that would be considered consideration, and for services rendered.
Your example is, I think, valid, but I, I'm, my scenario is, it's just a family situation to where a parent is being cared for, without any compensation, they're not being charged. Nobody is renting a room, nobody's receiving a paycheck, or, so to speak, or a direct compensation. It's just a family member caring for another family member.
And I think you have to look to the definition of caregiver, which is in the...
I have it highlighted.
It does provide for, "Any person that provides personal or domestic services for compensation, any form of consideration." The forgiveness of rent, or the allowance of a person to reside without having, without having to pay rent, is consideration.
Correct, okay.
And I think that's why, I was, I don't believe I was here the evening the district attorney appeared, but I think that's, from a legal interpretation, what one would view as consideration.
Thank you. I, yeah. I just didn't, I didn't see anything else, and I was kind of hoping I missed something in this long ordinance, but, okay, thank you.
Any more questions for staff, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, if I could follow up on that, if you, if I understood your question, it was if a caregiver moved into the, the person who needed the care. If you turn that around, and the person needing the care moves in with a family member at no cost, is that the same thing, or is there consideration being given in, in reverse almost?
I don't think that would be the interpretation, no, because it's, the, the benefit, in the situation where the caregiver is not being charged rent, they receive a benefit. In the situation where the caregiver is assuming the family member for purposes of providing care, they're, they're not getting the same economic benefit, and one might argue that there might be some form of detriment by having to take care of that family member. So the reverse wouldn't hold true, I don't think.
I think the intent of the ordinance is to protect the person needing the care from abuse, whether that be from a paid compensated caregiver or a family member, so are we talking about that situation still applying under this context? And if so, is that person who's caring for their elderly parent having to go through the process of getting a permit?
The, the short answer is, when the county evaluated this, there were two prawns to that discussion. There was a lot of documentation that says, in some cases, it's the family member who potentially is in a position that actually abuses and takes advantage of the elder, not exclusively. And then there's also a lot of family members that, out of responsibility and the way the family unit structure is, actually step up to the plate and do that. And the question here is, they've tried to come up with a balance that attempts, and what you see here is, the, the person identified as the caregiver, if there's consideration, then they're going to be defined as a caregiver, and they have to have a permit. They've also established the limited caregiver permit, where if only one person, you know, if you're caring for only one person, then there's another structure that allows that. So it's, I think there has been a change from the original concept that we looked at, but that's probably in the only area, and I think this is a step forward, and it's not a 100% protection, because there are still some people that think the idea that a family member has to be licensed and permitted is unconscionable, and there are others that draw a line that basically says, anybody doing it, no matter what the circumstances, has to be permitted. And I will also point out that this is a relatively new arena. The county is one of the first in the state moving forward. There are a few model ordinances being considered, and I think, you know, we may have to, to look at updating this after a few years' practice, but I think we changed the environment by adopting this, and we do have a protection in place that indicates to a general, to a general point that there should be a process for permitting and trying to protect those that are the elderly from being abused by their caregiver.
So the core, the core focus of this language is to address professional caregiving. Meanwhile, there's an understanding that private family care is a concern, part of which is, is dealt with here, but part of it isn't, and that's just because it may be impossible, as you say, to have 100% coverage in all circumstances.
I mean, to answer a hypothetical, in other words, if a family member moves in with somebody and doesn't get permitted, there's probably not necessarily anybody that's going to know about it unless it's reported, because if they don't, I'm just being honest, you know, if, if a family member's taking care of somebody and they don't comply, unless there's a reason that law enforcement, or the medical, or somebody feels that there's a situation, it may not get triggered. On the other hand, those that go out and actually employ and bring in somebody, you know, it'll be very clearly understood that these folks need to be permitted. So I think it is a big step forward, but I, I do think we have to acknowledge that there's a, a small area that, when it deals with a family member, if the family member's going to be paid and compensated for what they're doing, or receive consideration, then the expectation under the adoption of the ordinance is that they will go get a permit and be structured. And if they don't, then there may be consequences if it's found that they violated it.
I, I also point out that the permit is really a divulging criminal past, or a crime in their pasts on their record. Under 5.60070, a family member that is caring, they could waive that essentially knowledge that the family member has that past and still agrees to receive care from that, from that person. So the, the idea of the permitting system is really a divulging of information about someone's background. I would imagine in families, that may already be known, but there's also the, the idea that they can waive and have that person care for them nevertheless.
They assume the, the risk and responsibility of that.
Yes.
Right.
Any more questions? Councilmember Chilton?
Well, Steve, I, I think I want to correct something you said, and I just want to be sure. Under the limited caregiver permit, which Bob just referred to, you made a comment about caring for one, it's really that you would have been disqualified for no other reason than a criminal conviction, but then you're giving the disclosure to that individual, and they're still signing off on it.
That's correct, and you are limited to the number of people you can't care for.
Correct. But that, it really has to do with that conviction piece of it. Thank you, that's all my questions.
Any more questions for staff? Anyone from the public wishing to comment on this matter this evening? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Before we start our discussion on this, I do have, we did receive an email from Deidra Nesbit-Coombs, who is a CLPF. I'm not entirely sure what that means, but I'm sure somebody knows. And she does make the comment that family members are notoriously the largest abusers of the elder, whether or not they are compensated with money, blah, blah, blah. How do you plan to protect the elderly who may become a victim of their own family? These people will not be permitted. So that was an interesting perspective on the, on the new ordinance. So how does council wish to proceed?
I'd just, I'd just like to make a comment, if I could, Mayor.
Councilmember Dutton?
Yeah, I do think it's a step in the right direction, and I also, given the demographics of the town here, and living where I do, quite a number of elderly people, and quite honestly, this email was very appropriate, because I know of more than a handful of incidences right there in the park where this has happened, from a family member. And it happens, you know, whether, whether they just blow up, or whatever the case is. And a lot of times, I know in one case, it wasn't discovered for a while, and most cases, a neighbor is able to, you know, sort of ferret it out and make a call to management or what have you, but it is something to consider ser, seriously.
Councilmember Mueller?
To that, that same point, I certainly think that was, I have certainly read many things that that is the case, and I do believe that is the case, but we're adopting the county ordinance, so unless we want to write an entirely different ordinance, I mean, I think to Steve's point that this is new, many things new, and really hasn't been ferreted and tested well. It probably will get amended over time, so I don't really see, unless you, you know, the likelihood that we're going to sit down and write a totally independent, well-thought-out ordinance to, to deal with that, I think this is our, our best option at the time, to accept this one.
I would also just point out, under the adoption this way, we're also authorizing the county to, to serve as the administration, so we're providing the protection without actually adding the additional staff burden and work, and if we did go our own way, we would be subject to our own enforcement mechanisms and developing that process, which we are really, I have to say, quite candidly, not staff to do adequately, and I think this is a, a better model for us to start with.
Yeah, those permits would be very, very high if we had to do that in Yountville.
Councilmember Chilton?
I, I too agree. I think that the, the general goals of this are laudable. I think what's most important is the fact that if you, as an individual, go out and hire somebody that you do not know, that you should have some basis for getting information about who they are, as really kind of anybody can show up at your door. That being said, and knowing the fact that I think it's true, that, that family members, for very obvious reasons, can have influence, access, et cetera, I, I, I think this just simply goes too far, and I, I think that the ordinance could have been written very simply to allow, kind of like the limited caregiver permit, that if an individual wants to say, "I want my own son or daughter to live in my house, and I do not want them to have to give the county of Napa their social security number, their height, weight, color of eyes, their hair, passport photographs, to get a background check, a social security trace, criminal records check, federal records search, driving records search," I mean, it's, I think the problem is, is just the, there's such a level of intrusion at that point, that, that to me, A, I don't think it's going to be effective, B, what, what level of freedom are we just continually willing to give up? This could have been written very simply to allow somebody at no cost to have their own son or child, come into their own house and care for them, and I'm not hopefully there yet, but someday I might be, and I just, I just think it goes too far, and I think it's a, I think it's a bit of a product of trying to solve it. People aren't going to get these permits. It just doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me. That just goes too far to me. A simple line in there that said, "You have the right to opt out of this at no charge," would have been reasonable, so I don't support this, and I certainly don't support the town writing its own one. That doesn't make, that does not make sense. So I, I just think it goes too far.
Good, okay, thank you. Councilmember Dutton?
Well, I made my comments. I, I do think that you have to have something. I, I do agree with Councilmember Chilton there, that, you know, at what point are you just getting overboard? And quite honestly, I think as the town manager said, if they're going to do it, they're going to do it. You know, and unfortunately, you know, a lot of these cases, you know, I don't, I don't know how you can really avoid some of them. I really don't. Therefore, but certainly somebody that has family here, but they live somewhere else, they have no other choice, get, but sometimes they get but a caregiver, and there should be some assurances that they can, they know that that person leased initially, but as far as a family member, I, there's too many ways around it, and I don't, I don't think that would ever work, you know, so. But as far as the ordinance and everything, it's a step in the right direction.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I think this is really primarily targeted at the stranger, the professional caregiver, and I think it's appropriate with the conditions that are set... and I think it's appropriate with the conditions that are set forth here. One of the concerns I had was I was struggling to find the definition for abuse because I just felt like we automatically think of physical abuse as the number one. I was satisfied, though, when I read the term undue influence on page three of the definitions, that that covers what I think are equally critical concerns of mental, emotional, and financial abuse, and I think those are happening. I think this can act as a deterrent, it will not act as a deterrent to the private family member who, I think, the Councilmember Chilton is concerned, won't go through this process. But unfortunately, the ones that aren't going to abuse would be the ones that go through the process. So you could argue it might be overreaching, but I think an imperfect effort is better than, than no effort. I think this tool needs to be there to address what's clearly a significant issue. And so can it be tweaked in the future? Sure. And I think, will it ever have 100% coverage in satisfaction? No. But I think, as Councilmember Dutton said, I think it is going in the right direction to help protect the most vulnerable.
Thank you, and I agree with your comments. It is a step in the right direction. It's at least, at least we're doing something. We're taking an action tonight, hopefully, to, to start. As it applies to family members, well, you could interpret it that way, but I just see a scenario where a family situation, they're, this is, they're not going to even take this into consideration, and consequently, if abuse occurs and they're reported, then all the more reason to, to enforce this ordinance. So I can support this ordinance, and I think it's a, I think it's a good move, and I applaud the county for all the hard work that they've done on this, done on this over the past year or so. With that, I will entertain a motion to introduce.
I'll move for the introduction, first reading, and then waive the reading of ordinance. Blurry ordinance 389-10, an ordinance of the town of Yountville adding chapter 5.29 to the Town of Yountville Municipal Code, adopting chapter 5.60 of Title V of the Napa County Code for reference, by reference, relating to requirements for permits for elder and/or dependent adult caregivers.
Is there a second?
I just had a question. There's, which is it correct? I noticed on your recommendation you have 5.29 and 5.32 in the ordinance.
Yep, I missed one. We changed them all to 3.2 to leave some room in the ordinance.
Okay. So is it correct as it was read?
3.2 is the, 5.32 is the.
I'll second that then.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second as amended. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? No. Okay, that motion carries, thank you. Item 16, ZDRB appointments. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. ZDRB is currently recruiting for three positions due to natural expiration of term. Two members, Renata Holliday and Matt Lamborn, are not seeking reappointment. Marita Dornbecker is. At the close of the filing period, we received six applications for the three positions subsequent to this staff report. One of the applicants, Michael Share, it was determined that he doesn't actually live in Town Limit and is not a registered voter, and so he was not interviewed. And a second applicant, Jeff Durham, he's actually out of town and was unable to be present for the interviews, but submitted questions, response to ZDRB questions for council consideration. We received applications from Marita Dornbecker, Michael Share, Bob Gates, Rob Anglin, Charles Ainsworth, and Jeffrey Durham. Town conducted, town council conducted interviews earlier this evening, and by practice, council votes by ballot, and I will read the results of those ballots out loud unless there are other questions from council. Councilmember Dutton ranked Rob Anglin as first choice, Marita Dornbecker as second choice, Jeff Durham as third choice, Charles Ainsworth as second choice, and, pardon me, did I read that, did I say that incorrect? I was using the wrong line. Marita Dornbecker, second choice, Jeff Durham, third choice, Charles Ainsworth, fourth choice, and Bob Gates, fifth choice. Vice Mayor Dunbar selected Bob Gates as first choice, Rob Anglin, second choice, Marita Dornbecker, third choice, Jeff Durham, fourth choice, and Charles Ainsworth, fifth choice. Mayor Sosserman selected Mr. Anglin as first choice, Ms. Dornbecker as second choice, Mr. Gates as third choice, Mr. Ainsworth as fourth choice, and Mr. Durham as fifth choice. Councilmember Chilton selected Jeff Durham as first choice, Rob Anglin as second choice, Bob Gates as third choice, Marita Dornbecker as fourth choice, and Mr. Ainsworth as fifth choice. And Councilmember Mueller selected Jeff Durham as first choice, Bob Gates as second choice, Rob Anglin as third choice, Charles Ainsworth, fourth choice, and Marita Dornbecker, fifth choice. The tally for those result in Rob Anglin receiving 21 points, and Jeff Durham and Bob Gates receiving 16 points, Marita Dornbecker 14 points, and Charles Ainsworth eight. So the three individuals based on the rankings by council would be Rob Anglin, Bob Gates, and Jeff Durham. And with that, I would request a motion to appoint those three based on the highest vote getters.
I have a motion?
Actually, if I could just ask a question. Could you just, just for the record, clarify Councilmember Dutton's voting, just because I was confused when you kind of reconfigured.
I'm sorry, I'll repeat that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dutton's first choice was Rob Anglin, second choice, Marita Dornbecker, Jeff Durham, third choice, Charles Ainsworth, fourth choice, and Bob Gates, fifth choice.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any question? Any discussion? Do I have a motion to appoint? Move to approve? Move to appoint?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Congratulations to the appointees. Item 17, staff informational reports. I hope you all noticed that we received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the town's comprehensive annual financial report, our CAFER for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2009. Congratulations to staff on that one. Are there any other staff reports? Item 18, council reports. Flood control did meet last Tuesday, I believe, to, to approve the continuation of the Rutherford Reach Benefit Zone Assessment District and to levy that assessment, and that was pretty much it. And appoint, I believe, appoint a district representative to the North Bay Water Shed Association, which was, Director Kreider was appointed to that organization as chair, and that's about all that happened in flood control. NCTPA, we have a meeting tomorrow.
Yountville Elementary School, I'll report on that first. First of all, NCTPA tomorrow, Councilwoman Mueller is going to go in my spot. Yountville Elementary School ad hoc committee update. I don't want to be too repetitive, I'm not sure what we said last time, but a couple of key things. On July the 29th, there will be a Napa Valley Unified School Board meeting that will be considering and we hope approving a multi-year agreement to keep Yountville Elementary School And multi-year is more than two. That agreement will be signed by the school board, and the, the flip side of that will be the Yountville School Foundation, which you've, I've spoke about some and have probably read about in the paper. We had our first Yountville School Foundation Board meeting this past Friday and are moving along speedily. We have one last hurdle to, to jump with the IRS to get our tax ID certified as a nonprofit, and part of that was, our bylaw is being approved last Friday. So we're moving ahead with that. I expect that on August the 3rd, our only meeting in August, that there will be a, in the presentation section of, of the council meeting, will be a discussion with Superintendent Dr. Patrick Sweeney, who has agreed to come here and discuss that, that agreement and show his support for the school. Dr. Sweeney has also agreed, and I would like to extend an invitation to all the council staff, everybody in town, et cetera. Dr. Sweeney will be at the opening bell for the first day of Yountville Elementary School on Wednesday, August the 18th, and coming up soon. And he is doing that, it's going to be the very first school that he will visit as the new superintendent of the school district, and it's his show of support and just to kind of get people over the hump of the belief that the future of Yountville School is not, not safe. There's a lot of work to do. We talked about art. I'll talk about the school. We're going to have a six-figure, well in excess of a piece of art figure to raise for the next five years and beyond, so we're going to, we're going to be launching a campaign here, hopefully within the next month or so. We have received a few generous donations, and when we actually start asking people, hopefully we'll get more. So anyway, that's, there's been a lot of really positive news, and, you know, we're moving forward, and again, the 29th of July is, is a very important date, and I only expect good things out of that. So it's, it's been great, and I appreciate everybody's support so far. Thank you to Chef Thomas Keller and all the folks at Bouchon. Chef Keller subjected himself to the dunk tank at Bastille Day, and some portion of those proceeds are going to go to the school foundation. And Chef Keller is, knows how to taunt little children when they're throwing balls at a dunk tank, I'm telling you, it was, it was a sight to behold. And on that same vein, the Labor Day barbecue that is hosted every year by Focus, it's a Sunday Labor Day weekend, it's going to be at Yountville North Park this year, not at Veterans Memorial Park, this is one plug, I'll say that many times. The board of Focus has generously offered to donate half of their silent auction proceeds to the school foundation for the safety school effort, so much more to come on that, but everything is going in the right direction.
Good.
And I'll move on, Napa County League of Governments.
Actually, if I, before we change the subject, I just wanted to acknowledge also Carol Rasmussen from our Parks and Community Services Department and Zoe Harris, who helped rally some children together and were able to put together a banner, very specific and special banner, to be, that was shown at the Bastille Day celebration, asking people to support the school, which I think encouraged even more people than wanted to dunk Chef Keller and the management of Bouchon. So that was, I just wanted to acknowledge their efforts on pretty short notice. And also the efforts of Dr. Glazer before he retired. He was a champion of our efforts back in December, I think it was, when we were really starting to talk seriously about finding a solution. And do we need to?
Yeah, we need a motion to continue.
So moved.
To expand.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. That's a motion for me to continue? Thank you.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I just want to acknowledge, I wanted to acknowledge Dr. Glazer as well. Dr. Sweeney's been very receptive, but Dr. Glazer really helped set the foundation, and the school board has been very receptive, so we are encouraged about the potential outcome on the 29th. But thanks to Bouchon also for helping, and we've had some private contributions that are already pledged, that are also helping get, get some of the initial funding together. So the community has said the school's important, so now it's time to prove it.
Step up. Good. Nick Log?
Nick Log, myself and Councilwoman Mueller attended. We had a St. Helena-sized attendance at that one. It was down at Jonesy's at the Napa County Airport, which was very pointed out, is not in the American Canyon, but quite close. But it was a good meal. I'd actually never been down there on the renovated Jonesy's, and it's a pretty, it's actually a really nice setting, so that was, that was good. Representative from the California League of Cities spoke with the normal doom and gloom of the state budget situation, and we don't have any idea what's happening, and nobody knows what's happening, so just, just hang on. I think the important item that they did have is the proposition for the fall that the, the League of Cities was sponsoring to protect local revenues, has made it onto the ballot. I forget what the number is, it's like 20?
22.
22?
22.
Proposition 22. They promised us that this time it will really protect local revenues, even though the last time they promised the last one would really protect local revenues. So I think they've written this one a little more, stronger language. So that will be on the ballot, and, you know, otherwise it was, I mean, did they have anything good to say? Economy's not good, the state budget's not good.
Yeah, no, there was nothing good to say. The chicken, I thought, was really good, though, but they didn't have anything to say. Just, just to add to Prop 22, it's a little early to tell, but they're thinking there might be some, some of the big unions, they specifically mentioned, I think, the teachers' union that might be coming out against it. I think the bottom line was that it might be diverting funds away from, their special interest was, so don't expect that it'll be controversy-free, but that's what their, the early reports were, so that's all that I wanted to add.
Any more reports, comments?
Just one last report from the Yountville Arts Committee. There will be additional installations of outdoor sculpture coming as early as this Thursday. Jack Chandler, another local, highly respected artist, is participating. There'll be a couple sculptures, one at the courtyard at the community hall, community center, and another one at Hopper Creek Park adjacent to the French Laundry Garden, with a couple more soon to follow, as soon as we figure out how to get a free crane.
Anything else? All righty. Future agenda items, v. wine cellar use permit amendment request, Parks and Community Services Commission interviews and appointments, and award of NCTPA bus stop improvement grant. Item 20, closed session, we have no need for closed session, it says here. Item 21, adjournment.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We will see you on August 3rd.